Good evening, everyone. We called this meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right, we have no remote electronic attendance this evening. We do have a series of board appointments, which I am required to read completely out loud, so bear with me, please. Mayor's reappearance of Amy Trimble to the Special Service Area Six Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2027. Mayor's reappearance of Nick Bose to the Special Service Area Six Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2027. Mayor's reappearance of Laura Adams to the Special Service Area Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2027. Mayor's appointment of Andrew Severson to the Special Service Area Six Board to fill the unexpired term of Nick Holkey to expire September 30, 2026. Mayor's reappearance of Larry Mieski to the Quad Cities Civic Center Authority for a three-year term to expire May 31, 2027. Mayor's reappearance of Ann Hartley to the Public Art Commission for a two-year term to expire September 30, 2026. Mayor's reappearance of Zyga Thorson to the Public Art Commission for a two-year term to expire September 30, 2026. Mayor's reappearance of Alex Salvaria to the Public Art Commission for a two-year term to expire September 30, 2026. Mayor's appointment of Angelica Villarreal to the Human Rights Commission for a two-year term to expire August 31, 2026. And finally, Mayor's appointment of Sue Normoal to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of Avery Pearl to expire August 31, 2025. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll move to our presentations. 5.1, Government Finance Officers Association's Distinguished Budget Award. Carol Barnes.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We are very pleased to inform the council that the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the City of Moline with GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its 2024 budget. This is the third consecutive year that we have received this award. This award represents a significant achievement by the city. It reflects the commitment of the mayor, the city council, and leadership staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. And in order to receive this budget award, the city had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Courtney Nelson, our budget manager, who's doing a terrific job. She took the lead in preparing and submitting the budget document for GFOA, along with all of the directors and their staff, as well as our entire finance department, and Lori Uloa. And now for even more exciting news in the world of budgeting. I have to get very excited about budgeting.
This is exciting.
This year, we, the City of Moline, received special recognition for its 2004 strategic goals and strategies.
2004 or 2024?
Did I say four? 2024.
Awesome.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Can you just re-say that again, so I get that correctly from my notes? Special recognition for 2024.
We received special recognition for our 2024 strategic goals and strategies. And this special recognition is only given when all of the reviewers have given us the highest marks across the board. It is very difficult to achieve, and it's a significant accomplishment. So I just want to say a big congratulations to the mayor, the council, city administrator, Macy McManus, who also really had a lead role in compiling the formatting of that document, as well as, again, to all of our directors and the staff and the finance department. So I have to clap on that.
Thank you so much for that update, and congratulations to you as well.
Yeah, thank you. It's very exciting.
All right, so we're on to 5.2.
Yes. And again, we are very pleased to inform the council that we have received GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And this is our 31st consecutive year that we have received this award. You might say, why is it 2022? By the time you finish your audit, you're six months into the next year, and then it takes at least nine months to go through this. It's a very detailed review process. Takes about nine months, so we're very, very pleased. And again, this award recognizes a significant achievement by the city. It reflects the commitment of the mayor, city council, and leadership staff to meeting the highest principles in governmental financial reporting. And in order to receive this certification, the city had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective financial reporting. These guidelines are designed to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimal requirements of generally-accepted accounting principles to prepare annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving this goal. And again, I'd like to give a, you know, thank you to Baker Tilly, our auditors, as well as Lori Uloa and our entire finance department for taking the lead in compiling this report. Again, and all departments who participated as well, because every single department is part of the audit, and all of those work papers and everything get incorporated into our final financial report, so.
Great, thank you so much, and again, congratulations.
Thank you.
So we move to 5.3, and we begin a string of presentations from partners in the community, and they have all been told that these presentations should be about five to seven minutes long, and so don't be offended when we hold up a warning sign at five minutes, that there are two minutes left, but simply to stick to an equitable timeframe for everyone who's presenting tonight. Okay? Take it away. Alex Eliz.
Good evening, Mayor Raya Putti, council members, Mr. Vitas. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, or this afternoon before you, representing Renew Moline and our 35-year partnership. We have been in a public-private partnership since 1991. The projects that are listed on the left actually need to be updated, because there are actually more than are listed there, but there is more than 30, and we're really proud of this partnership. I wanted to just touch on a few recent contributions from pretty recently, the past six months to a year. Obviously, we worked really hard on getting the JCPenney redevelopment underway. We're in discussions now with a developer about the JCPenney Phase Two. We were proud to be a member of the team that secured the Par instrument expansion. We've continued to support the Riverfront Master Plan and other activities. We also secured, a little more than a year ago, a grant to, or actually, a little less than a year ago, a grant to study a food-based innovation center. We were looking at the Spiegel Building, but we have now, the study that we're doing with New Venture Advisors, who only does food systems, they will look at both the existing Spiegel Building and then a new-build site, and so that study is underway. And I just wanted to let you know where that was. I know a number of you are on the project management team, and so you've seen a presentation from New Venture Advisors in March. You'll see them again in November, so we're looking forward to that. And at the end of this process, the city council, mayor and council, and the staff will have the tools that you need to evaluate that project, know whether or not it's feasible, and then to decide if that should become a part of your Riverfront Master Plan, either in the existing building or in a new-build scenario. So we're really proud to be able to bring you that and fund it entirely. I also wanted to touch on two other organizations. One is Moline Community Development Corporation. I wanted to give you just a little bit of background. They were begun, established in 2008 by city staff. Their mission is to secure affordable housing, promote community development, all the wonderful things that are on there. Their board does represent low and moderate-income neighborhoods. And at the beginning, I thought it was just worth pointing out that the, I spoke with a person who was on city staff at the time and who mentioned that the initial intent was to become a CDFI, a Community Development Finance Institution, which Alderman Macias knows all about, but that was never established. And so they've had a variety of funding sources over time. Most recently, their full-time executive director for the past three years, or for the past two years, was funded by ARPA. And so I understand that that's changing, and we're committed to transitioning them in whatever way is needed. But I also wanted to point out a couple of things they've done this year, which I find interesting, and I feel like with an affordable housing crisis on our hands nationwide, I feel like it should be all hands on deck. And so they've done a couple of things that I think are really important. One was they held a series of workshops called Handy at Home, which was intended to teach homeowners some basic maintenance skills that would give them more confidence. And I think they reached a population that's a super-important population. I've talked with city staff and with you before about that cycle of investment by property management companies buying up single-family homes, and that is disrupting the affordable housing in single-family homes. And so I thought the Handy at Home Workshop Series, reaching 96% of the attendees were homeowners, and 40% of them had incomes under $50,000, those are people we want to keep in their homes, and so I thought that was just worth relaying to you. And then at the end of that process, they did secure a $6,000 grant from Trinity Lutheran Church, and then with that and the sponsorships, they were actually net to the good on that. So I thought that was a successful program. And then they were able to secure $18,000 grant for new trees from Trees Forever. They have another grant pending. We have done this all under the direction of Director Griffith through Parks, and that was, they're planting another 25 trees, I think, in October, so. Kirk Marsky runs our Moline Center program, which has also been managed by a variety of different entities over time. He spent a lot of time, he's now been here two years. His first year was spent untangling a lot of program administration. For example, one of the things that he did was work with the Moline, the Main Street Commission, to decide its future, and it voted to disband itself, because there were a lot of redundancies with SSA VI. And so Kirk has spent a lot of time with that. These are some of the other activities he's done. He's focused on placemaking. He's focused on really marketing downtown, creating new events and things, and then making sure that when people are downtown, that their experience is good, and they have the information they need to find what they want, for example, restaurants. So he's been working on all of that. These are just some upcoming things. We're working with Mr. Harold and his staff on The Great Race, which will be here next June. There are other activities that we just, that Kirk will jump in and support to make sure that everything goes smoothly. Coming up, we have Holiday Hop. Kirk manages that in partnership with our downtown businesses, and so we are excited about all the things happening downtown. In closing, I'll just, just next year, our intent is to finish the public market study with MKSK and New Venture Advisors. We'll continue to support the city during its Riverfront Master Plan as it starts to get finally drafted and then out for public review. We're monitoring and supporting the JCPenney Phase One redevelopment, and we'll continue to press forward on Phase Two. We're also working with Mr. Mathias, Mr. Parr, and their team on establishing the Rivers Edge Tax Credit, which will be a game-changer for downtown. We're super-excited about that and very grateful to the chamber for its leadership on that. And then we'll just continue to support new residents moving downtown, focus on the needs of our downtown businesses, and pursue new opportunities for placemaking. So we are grateful for your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Did I make it? Yes. And council, this is a time for folks to ask questions of the presentations, yes. All right, does anyone on council have questions at this moment in time? Yes, Mr. Timian.
Alex, is there a plan for the MCDC to be self-sustaining? I appreciate that the ask was 50% of last year, but is there ever, whether there was affordable housing, which CDCs usually do, and rental income, or some other sort of income stream for that?
The short answer is yes, it's a difficult not-to-crack. We have worked closely with the city and its housing task force. But the organization has only had a full-time executive director for the last two years. The first executive director had made some progress in identifying different avenues that could potentially get them there. But as I said, even if the organization can't afford to have a full-time executive director, we will work with them as best we can, because there are things that a CDC can do that others can't. And so I'm interested in getting to the bottom of that and then, you know, potentially creating new avenues through existing city programs or new ones.
Thank you. Anyone else for Renew Moline? Yes, Ms. Macias.
Thank you, Your Honor. And is the CDFI option still there, or is that something that's not an option?
I would love to see that happen, and so I would like to explore it. At this point, I don't know the level of effort. I'm in my own budgeting for Renew Moline right now, and so we have allocated some funds next year for what we're calling organizational development, and evaluating that as an option may be something we look at. So we are actively considering it. I just don't know enough right now about how heavy of a lift it is. I suspect it's a very heavy lift, otherwise it would have been done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we move to presentation 5.4, Visit Quad Cities Funding Request. Mr. Harold, yes, question?
Yeah, I just would like to disclose that through my work, we have a business relationship with Visit Quad Cities. It is not a conflict of interest, but I would like to share for the purpose of notification.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Harold.
By the way, congratulations. Good evening, Dave Harold, President CEO of Visit Quad Cities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you this evening. On behalf of our Board of Directors, I do want to mention and just thank the mayor for her continued support and commitment to our board. I also want to recognize that our board chair, Maria Antiveres, is here with us tonight in a different capacity, but hopefully always representing Visit Quad Cities. So a couple of things, we've had a wonderful relationship with City of Moline for 34 years. We've been operating since 1990. We've got several slides that we're going to roll through. We have shared with you our mission, vision, our brand promise, our belonging statement, which is critically important to our organization, and something that we think is vitally important for all of our public sector, you know, partners to understand. The work of DMO, Destination Marketing Organization, is beyond just like a heads-and-beds relationship. I think the things that we are doing, obviously, it all starts with the visit, is impacting livability, it's impacting our workforce and talent, and it's impacting investment. So as we think about how we're structured as an organization, we always like to share this wheel, because we feel like it's vitally important to our story and how we operate as an organization. Capital investment through tourism, we feel, is the best kind of money. We love when people come here and they invest in the Quad Cities. These dollars are being reinvested in quality of life, and we all know how critical that is. We are an accredited organization globally. There's only 240 destinations that have this special accreditation. We're very proud of the seal. It's a multi-year process. There's about 110 items of criteria that we have to go through to operate at a high level of standard and scrutiny through destinations international. And also important to note, we are the state-certified Destination Marketing Organization and Convention of Visitors Bureau through the state of Illinois. So we have these two special distinctions. The visitor economy is about a $1.3 billion economy that we represent. Tourism impacts about 9,000 some odd jobs in the region, and there's a lot of tax generation that's created. And it's also important to note, it's not just hotel-motel taxes. It's the entire system that we're impacting by nature of what we do. We've got a lot of business intelligence and research at our disposal. We wanted to give you a snapshot of our FY '24, July 1 of '23 through June 30, 2024. About 6.7 million total visits or trips happened in the region, representing about 13.5 million visitor days and an average length of stay of two days. That's an amazing impact, just by nature of what we're doing to market the organization and certainly market the region and all of the communities that make up the Quad Cities. You'll see our top cities in terms of the DMAs that are coming in. These are our source markets, anything from Chicago, Des Moines, Peoria, Rockford, Milwaukee, Omaha, Champaign, et cetera. We wanted to give you a snapshot. This was downtown Moline, the same fiscal year. These are people coming into downtown Moline beyond 50 miles plus. Roughly 300,000 total visits or trips just in the downtown area alone, and about 373,000 visitor days with an average length of stay of 1.3 days. These are things that hopefully will add a lot of value in terms of the relationship that we provide back to you as a key investor. In 2024, our fiscal year '24, we drove 30 million in direct economic impact through hosting meetings, conventions, sporting events, group business. We generated 26 million-plus advertising impressions. We booked our first national trade show in the history of the Quad Cities and have done a variety of things that hopefully are driving a lot of value in terms of the ROI that you're receiving. Some of these are tied to some marketing that we do outbound. So you'll see things that we're doing in Chicago, so Chicago Transit Authority and media placements that we're doing all over in these source markets. Digital advertising, you know, placement, video campaigns, a variety of things that we do year in, year out. We are very connected to DCO and the Illinois Office of Tourism, as well as Travel Iowa, the Illinois Destinations Association, Iowa Travel Industry, you know, partners. We work hand-in-hand with DCO and IOT on a variety of things, and that's important to note in terms of the relationship. We're also the stewards of the Illinois MAID program, so through the state, we are the organization that works with them to provide ideas and suggestions on Illinois MAID. You've seen some of our products. We just recently announced a John Deere Trail, excited about that. We also have a budget summary in your packet of material, which will kind of show you how we're structured organizationally. And then the one thing we wanted to share with you briefly was, this was our closing FY N24, and you'll get a feel for the investments that come in through the public sector, chiefly through the municipalities. This does not count the state, but roughly about 1.3 million. You'll see where the City of Moline comes in, at 25% of hotel-motel taxes against the other municipalities that we work with. We are in the final throes of an inter-local agreement. We've been working very closely with Bob, and just want to say thank you to him. About two years in this process. It's a board-driven priority. The rationale is to have a long-term contractual agreement between our funding sources, all seven, the big seven, if you will, in the region. We need a multi-year agreement, because we're doing assurances and certainly obligating our organization in taking risk on future events. And business, there are deliverables, there's a series of goals, and that partnership investment and the threshold that you provide to us is critical in terms of what we're doing to drive more value back to the region. So in closing, I just want to say thank you. The investment that you provide to our organization is something that we're proud of. We continue to do anything that we can to impact tourism. There's a lot of momentum in the market, and we know that we can do a lot more. So thanks for your time, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Harold. Questions from our council? Yes, Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. We, so we were giving 17.84. So we went up to 25, money well spent. Are we able to, like, accurately calculate what the return on that additional investment was? I know we're regional, it's kind of hard to pinpoint, but I'm just kind of looking, because you're asking for an additional 2% next year or this year? I can't remember.
No, that would be, that would be for FY, our FY '26. So what we've sort of agreed to is the 25% for FY '25. That's what we've budgeted for, or we can certainly show you, you know, value. The one thing I will note, that 25% is a critical number. Currently, collectively in the region, we're at 16%. The national average for DMOS and that revenue flow is 50%. So we are woefully behind communities like Rockford, Peoria, Champaign, others. So again, the 25%, we're proud and grateful for that, you know, investment increase, but we're still way behind our comp sets in terms of what we compete with every day in Illinois.
I would be interested in knowing, because my concern is ARPA's running out, and so I'm just looking at money a little differently. And obviously, if a dollar invested turns into $2 returned, it's well worth it. I just kind of want to understand what, and maybe that's a next-year conversation.
Well, I think the other piece, too, Alderman, is, you know, we're also saving residents on their taxes by nature of what we're generating in terms of that outside money. Again, that outside revenue capture is so vitally important, and those are probably costs that the city would have to incur to do the quality-of-life enhancements that you want to do.
Thank you, Ms. Castro.
I'm just curious if this percentage is similar to what the other cities our size in the area are funding?
They are. The only nuance to that is the City of Davenport is currently not at a percentage base, and that is the one thing that we've been working on with them. They had an obligation years ago, that was maybe 10 to 12 years ago, that they're still kind of working through. So their current threshold of investment with us is $375,000. They are going to be increasing it for FY '25, and then they will be transitioning to that 25%. And we do have an executed agreement with the City of Davenport, the City of Bettendorf, and the City of Rock Island currently.
Thank you. Yes, please, I was going to say, please update them.
Yeah, if I could just update you as well. We were prepared to move forward, along with the other cities, at that 25% funding level. It was a master funding agreement, and this has been a long time in the coming. It's been at least two years that I can recall that we've been going through the process. And unfortunately, one of the big seven, and that is East Moline, because it's not a home role community, doesn't have the ability to enter into that agreement. So one of the things that I've been working on with their city administrator is an intergovernmental agreement, which would allow them to extend their commitment to Visit Quad Cities. So you'll be seeing that coming forward shortly.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt.
Yeah. As we're thinking about the percentages, I know that last year, we brought up to be in line with the other communities. I do think it's important, as we think forward, that while we're watching, we want to make sure that we are remaining a place that is pushing toward more tourism. With us having Civic Center in the area, and with us having a lot of events that get based here and that are coming here, I think that we will lose some of we let that go to slip. I think it's one of the areas where we want to express our leadership.
The only thing I would add to that, thank you, Alderman, is we laid out a pro forma that would take us literally over the next decade and work very closely with the city and county administrators, so that they could have a feel for what that forecast would look like, because if we're growing, you're growing, and vice versa. So we are interconnected as it relates to the investment that we're bringing in, and hopefully it's going to be furthering, you know, your revenue capture as well, which I think we have that shared goal in alignment. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, Quad City Chamber Funding Request. Ms. Forsythe. Oh, yes, you have another question? Oh, yeah. Hi, Ms. Schmidt.
Through my work, I have a business relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. It's not a conflict of interest, but I do like to bring it up for the notification.
Thank you. Go ahead. Oh, yes, Mr. Macias.
I serve on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce as well, so I will abstain from any, anything that might be deemed not appropriate.
Thank you. All right, it's all yours. And the timer is going.
Thank you, council, mayor, our friends, city staff. Julie Forsythe, Senior Vice President for Business and Economic Growth of the Quad Cities Chamber, Economic Development. So we are happily in our fourth year of a four-year agreement that we already have in place with the City of Moline for Economic Development Services. And these are the areas in which we provide support and work with our partners. Regional marketing, business attraction, business retention and expansion. So we are all about bringing business and investment to the Quad Cities region, letting people know about the great assets and why it's great to do business in the region, get them interested, top of mind, so when they have a project, whether it's a business looking to relocate or expand into the region, or if it's a site selector that has a project, Quad Cities is top of mind. We do that through the regional marketing and the business attraction work that we do. And then we spend a lot of time with our existing business to help them expand and to make sure they have the resources that they need to be successful. So these are the activities that we do throughout the course of the year and through the services agreement. And then, as a reminder, right now, these are the industries that we focus on. So it's industrial, defense, ag innovation, logistics, advanced So it's industrial, defense, ag innovation, logistics, advanced manufacturing, and corporate support services and operations. And this is our region. So we are regional economic development. So it's not only the metro of the Quad Cities, it's the three full counties in Iowa and the three full counties in Illinois. And so not to bury the lead tonight, we're here to ask for continued funding of $71,743.88. As I said, we're in the last year of a services agreement, of which, thank you, you folks had approved and, and already provided us that funding. So we are looking at our next fiscal year, which is different than yours. So your calendar year, our next fiscal year starts July 1st, runs through June 30th of '26. And so we, it probably in the news, and if you were at our annual meeting, we heard, you have heard that we have a new president and CEO. And as part of that, he announced at the annual meeting that we will be creating Grow Quad Cities. So it's taking the economic development work, the same services and everything that you saw, and taking that out from under the chamber name and bringing that over to the side, being called Grow Quad Cities. Economic Development Organization with expanded focus. So we will continue to do the industrial, which is everything that I shared on that last slide for industrial targets, as well as mixed use and retail. And so this will not start until, or the additions will not start until July 1st of 2025. And this dovetails nicely. So when Peter first got here, he and I went around and talked with all of our public sector partners and talked about everybody's priorities. And naturally, everybody within your cities do have different priorities for development. Some of it is industrial focused, some of it is not. So we're talking about new priorities that will help align nicely with Moline priorities moving forward. And so with regard to, to provide more context around our funding request, I have Bree Collier, our CFO, who's happy to talk about that.
I'll do my best to do a quick change because I know I'm on a time limit. So what we're talking about this first year is fiscal '26. We did put out the multi-years for you so that you could see what's in that new proposed agreement. Part of the concepts behind that, in the orange bar here, you can see our total cost per capita of what we spend for economic development. The dotted line indicates what would happen under the new service agreement. So you can see we expand that per capita expenditure. In the blue bars, those are the per capita contributions from all of our public partners. So not only City of Moline, but our additional counties and cities in the area. What we're trying to do is balance that public-private partnership because it's never one side of the coin, as Mr. Harrell mentioned earlier. It's more than just our public partners, it's our private contributions as well. So what we're aiming for is by the end of fiscal '30, we would have about 33% contribution from our public partners, the remaining contribution coming from private industry. And if you want to look at it in a different way, I've got it here in a graph. You can see the per capita contribution, we're asking for a 20 cent a year increase per capita. And then the total cost per capita increasing year over year. So by the end of fiscal '30, which is the current agreement we're talking about, we're at that 33% contribution for public contributions.
Does anybody have any questions for Bree before I move on with regard to the financial aspect?
Not the financial. I would just say under those priority project areas, I wouldn't want to forget about Tiff Seven.
Correct.
It was an exhaustive estimate.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep, thank you. So just some wins over the past year and what we've been up to. So this shows for fiscal year '24, we have five successful projects within the region. Each year is different. Sometimes it's a mix of successful attraction and expansion. This year was five successful, successful expansion projects with a total economic impact for the region of 122 million plus. For Rock Island County, it's 6,205, obviously Moline is a part of that. Our economic impact modeling does not allow us to get down city by city. I wish it would, but it doesn't. So you're part of the 6-2, but that's pretty good. Two of those projects were right here in Moline. So everybody knows about Par Instrument and Astro America. So these are the expansion projects that where we either facilitated, led, provided resources to help support in one or another a particular way. Obviously Par Instrument, that's a biggie, that's transformative. Astro America, they are located out at the Quad City Airport DC-based Research Institute. And Think Tank focused on additive manufacturing has provided support to the world's largest 3D printer out on Rock Island Arsenal. Regional marketing, so a lot of this you don't see because you're in market, this is all outbound. So this, our targets to our site selectors and companies thinking about coming to the region. We do a lot of research as to who that is, here's some ads, I'm moving quickly, lots of collateral sent out to our targets, inclusion in Site Selection Magazine, why is the Quad Cities a great place to be? So this is all the regional marketing that you probably don't see. Business attraction, it's lead generation and our outreach to site selectors and companies. We do that through direct outreach. It can be at some of these trade shows, conferences. We log 235 out-of-market conversations about the Quad Cities with these folks. We do a fam tour every year. What's a fam tour? We bring site selectors to the region to get them to understand what is the Quad Cities like, what, how is it to do business here? We do a lot of having them meet workforce partners, businesses within the region to understand the benefit of being here. We facilitated a number of different events around the region, able to include Moline businesses and personalities. Alex was available to provide an overview for them on the riverfront development, well represented at the CEO Breakfast Roundtable, they always love that. Vic Almgren, Moline Forge, Jim Nelson, Par Instrument, Andrea Crawford, George Evans. Chris Mathias was able to participate in the Moline, excuse me, the Metro ED Practitioners Lunch, where they get to talk to everybody and understand our municipalities and truly see that we work together as a region. Business retention and expansion, a lot of outreach here. We do throughout the entire region, probably about 120 to 135 visits to our primary industry businesses in Moline. These are the 12 that we went to visit last year. We put together that list with various priorities, including working with city staff to do that outreach. We usually have somebody from the city that attends with us and invite our partners. This is the type of assistance and referrals that we provide through those meetings. And we understand what's working, what's not working, where do they need help, what are barriers, make all the connections that we need to, make some introductions for business where we can. And then also help our businesses understand what are grants and financial assistance opportunities. Maiden Illinois was a grant to help with technology adoption within the region. Whitey's Ice Cream in Moline was awarded $189,000. We presented that opportunity to them, as well as many of the, all the businesses in the Illinois Quad Cities. Networking and education events continue through our hub, hub and hu, hub huddles and hub brews. Moline businesses, in addition to other businesses attendees for the networking and education, in addition to sometimes being hosted in Moline locations. We helped facilitate and organize the Makers on the Move last year. That was the Illinois Manufacturing Association. And who else was on that? IMEC, excuse me, coming through the state to understand and see the great manufacturers within the region, spotlight, big tour at Par Instruments. We like visit Quad Cities or partner closely with our state organizations, keep our priorities, your priorities on the map and work in collaboration with them. We have workforce board representation, it's the number one issue for businesses in the region. Always want to be aware of where are the, the training dollars and dollars available to businesses to leverage those programs. There's somebody on our team who represents on all three of these boards in some capacity. And then we convene, convene, communicate, and connect, that's what the chamber does. These are all the different ways in which we engage with our public sector partners, City of Moline, at different roles. So you can see that where, there as well. I know I went over. I'm trying to.
We appreciate you trying.
And so anything you have questions on, happy to try to answer a question.
Thank you. Yes, questions from the council? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
With the transition into using the Grow Quad Cities organization, how does our funding play into the split between those organizations going forward?
Thank you for your question. So the intent is with the Grow Quad Cities creation, it's going to be housed underneath the chamber. All contributions for Grow Quad Cities, which would include the public contributions, will be kept separate from any kind of chamber funds. So that is used specifically for those programs, for the expanded scope of work that Julie talked about earlier. So it would be a separate bank account, separate accounting. Our public partners would sit on the Board of Directors for Grow Quad Cities and really setting the initiative for, for that.
So where does our money go?
Into Grow Quad Cities.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
Oh, that was going to be my question. So it's a separate 501(c)(3).
Correct, 501(c)(6).
501(c)(6). That, that was my question. So we, we're not going to have an additional request for Grow. Gotcha, that's okay.
So just to be clear also from our finance director, are we, we're budgeting for one number for, for the chamber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what you were getting at? One number or where does, and where it goes?
Yes, yeah.
Got it. Other questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, other question. As we think about bringing, and this will probably be more for Julie.
Yeah, of course.
As we bring on the new target audiences, which I think are audiences that appeal a lot to us and that will have a lot more opportunities, does that mean efforts will be coming back in some of the other industries? How is that intended to balance moving forward? Now, we already hit, you know, with those five industries, we're adding two more. Those two are very attractive, but I'm just concerned if it's going to be that they're going to be neglected or how are we going to balance that?
So we are in the midst of setting this up over the next year. So it's, think of it as just a larger volume of variety of projects. We're still getting projects from the states, both Iowa and Illinois. We're still getting direct inquiries. We're still getting referrals from our partners for all of the projects in the industrial sector. But we, we will be doing additional marketing to attract other sectors to the region, different folks to, so right now the site selectors that we focus on are the ones that do industrial development. So it'll be additional site selectors that do other types of projects. So we will be broadening our targets. And so it's the big funnel always in sales, like you try to get as many to come in and then they work down the funnel. And as it gets closer to a match, then you're working with X amount of projects.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything further from the council? Anything you'd love to add?
No, I think it's been.
And then just to clarify, you had asked about the one number. So we had included the, on the, one of the earlier slides, the year over year.
Yes.
Is Bree referenced the 20 cent increase?
Yes.
Year over year on the per capita basis.
Thank you. All right, we move to project now, Level Up Program Funding Request. Reverend Dr. Dwight Ford, right? Do we have the doctor yet?
We'll be defending dissertation this fall.
Okay. Well, good luck.
We're looking forward to that day. Madam President, rather, Madam Mayor, and to all the council, we have a wonderful opportunity just to give you an update of the investment we received last year and our commitment to move people up and out of poverty. We've had a chance to work with your wonderful staff, very competent and capable, and strategize about how we move the agenda forward. This is probably without question one of the most inclusive programs covering all three areas of poverty, generational poor individuals who have had a restriction on opportunity. The working poor is included in this as well, and the crisis poor, people that are normally doing pretty good, but some crisis, whether it's a departure or death of a loved one or a partner, or it is the fact of a health crisis that normally spins people out into the challenges of poverty. Our work over the past months have been not only to secure individuals, but save them. I'd like to just frame this very quickly. Prime Minister Winston Churchill said in 1940, concerning the London Blitz that Germany was bombing, he said, please, whatever you do, save the cathedral at all costs. 800 people a day die from poverty, 250,000 a year. This work, I assure you, saves lives. And I think it is worthy that we do everything that we can do to save the cathedral or the human existence here in Moline. If we could take a look at some of the numbers, you can kind of see the different categories that we have. And so we had Class A and Class B. So those two classifications, Class A is $400 a month of monthly investments. We were able to enroll 25 households, that was the limit, 32 adults and 28 children. And then on the emergency side, these are individuals that could receive up to a $2,000 investment for an emergency that they prove that it was an emergency, we take care of it, send the page, payments directly to the vendor. 66 adults and 41 children. That gives us 83 households, 167 individuals. I have heard the stories, I've had a chance to see the faces and how important this work has been. We did our best to try to provide some of the narratives of some of the stories. But before I get to some of the narratives of successes, I just want to shake some of the commitments. 77% of the enrollees said that they utilize these funds for, for housing. And most of us know the housing crisis in the Quad Cities, this is major. 62% of them utilize their funds, they said, on food, 58% on gas, bus passes, car repairs, or car payments. And that car payments is a very unique case, between two individuals in a home, both of them spouses, husband and wife had to have surgeries equally. And they would have lost everything coming out of those surgeries. Glad to say that they're both on the other side of their surgeries, they're doing well, their transportation is still intact, and they're going to work every day now. There also is the 41% on hygiene, cleaning supplies, and clothing, things that so many of us take for granted. 38% of them said they utilized it for childcare and school expenses. If we have young children, we know how inaffordable, unaffordable childcare is at this particular time across the nation. 21% on household activities of self-care. And what does that really mean? Poverty restricts, poverty puts a chokehold on opportunity. And there's a wonderful opportunities for people for the first time to do something that they believe adds to their, their longevity and life and opportunity that maybe they could not afford before. So there are so many, there's an individual that, whose son received our support in the Class A to $400 emergency, rather, the investments, monthly investments. He had an emergency of a surgery because of a construction injury. He had to have that surgery, he could not go to work after that, he lost employment. And his wife was doing her best to keep things moving. She did not make enough to take care of the household with the children as well. He was enrolled in this program. His father came to me and let me know personally, they would have lost everything without this program. Everything. On the emergency side, I was doing one of the, and thank you for so many that came out to our evicted exhibit. We were in a conversation, and we were talking to directly impacted people who had been evicted. This young lady was on the podium or the roster and giving her account of it. And I happened to ask very quickly, I said, you know, could you give us the darkest moment? She says, I was with my, my two children, I moved from Chicago, didn't have any connections here really, I was doing my best. They cut back my hours, I started moving everything down, and I couldn't hold it together. And I said, okay, and she started tearing up. And I said, you don't have to go any further, I don't want to re-traumatize you. Could you tell me when it turned? She said, I was standing in eviction court with the 14th Judicial Court Circuit, and they moved me to eviction diversion. And in that program, they said there was a Level Up program. And she started smiling. I'm here because of Level Up. My kids are taken care of, they're not in the backseat of my car anymore. It's programs and opportunities like that that changes life, absolutely. I want to move quickly here so I could share some of the other data points as well. More than 50% of them received food supports as well. This is important as we note the great commitment that so many people are not only housing insecure, but their food insecure. We layered up services as we are working to level up families and individuals. So every dollar that you invested in us, we matched it up to $66,640 of funding that we have. Water, rent, car repairs, and light heat. Just for general knowledge, $1.1 million of light heat investment to Moline residents here over the past year. So where are we going and what we are asking for in the future? We are pushing the opportunity to see if we can increase that classification to 35 households, 30 households in Level 2, $60,000 worth of investment, that are paid internship. And I want to tell you the interesting thing about this, we believe. We believe this in the best interest to create a community of care. We're going to shop and farm our best resources here in Moline to find a Moline resident that would like to be that paid intern. We believe that if we could secure them with a wonderful paid intern, create a community of care, that they're more likely to stay with residency here and find a way to move up in life right here rather than looking for greener pastures in some other place across the nation. So, we are thankful for this opportunity. $264,000 of investment. I had a chance to spend a week in Seattle for our 60th anniversary on the War on Poverty. And while there, they were asking about programs like this. Very few hands went up. It was one of our largest attendance, 1,500 attendees. This program is not just unique in the Quad Cities. There's not a public-private partnership that invests away with a community action agency in our state of Illinois. And they're asking us to present on this nationally. We're making great gains and proving that it's possible. We're moving them up and out of poverty. This program not only secures them, but it actually saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Ford. Thank you also to the Council. I think, you know, we're doing something new. There's always risk when we do something new, but I appreciate your support of this program and your work individually to get it done. Thank you for the report that was also a requirement of our agreement, right?
Absolutely.
And open it up the floor for questions from Council. Yes, Ms. Castro.
I have a question. So, the residents that are in that Part A this year, so next year, are they going to continue in that or will they be a complete different group of families?
So, the goal is to honor the commitment we began with. We will graduate, so to speak, this wonderful cohort. All 25 members that began with us completed the program. They had to meet with us on a regular basis, converse about where their investments are being made and how they're going to make forward steps in the future with our support and others. So, our goal is to continue to manage them through the rest of our services within Community Services Block grant funding. We'll still be very close to them. We don't want to say, "Here we go, now you're on your own." We want to stay connected. I mentioned St. Paul Cathedral. That cathedral was built, built in 1710. It had survived fires, Viking attacks. It had been rebuilt time after time. When people go through poverty, as some of you know, it's always seemed like they're under attack by something. So, it takes a while to build the construction. So, it takes a lot of people saying, "Let's save this at all costs." And so, to answer your question succinctly, we will graduate them, welcome another cohort in, stay connected to them as their journey still continues.
Thank you. And if Council could, Margaret, if you could highlight, like, we built our agreement for the 12-month pilot program. We will have to update that agreement if, if the Council chooses to continue to fund this.
Yeah.
Correct. Thank you. And we're really, a 12-month program, we're only seven months into it.
That's right. Because of the construction of the program, we made adjustments.
And the recruitment.
And thank you for the flexibility. We find this work always having to make adjustments. The destination never changes, but sometimes we have to deal with turbulence, go a little high, go a little lower, go around. But we still make it to our destination. Seven months, right now, lives are being changed. And so, we're hopeful that we can do this again, increase capacity. We've learned a lot through this process and we want to secure more families in Moline.
Thank you.
I have one additional question. I know that when we did this, when we started this, one of the qualifications was that the person had to be enrolled in some type of either college or some kind of training. But, so, that went away, right? Are we going to be adding that back in or is that completely gone, right? Or will priority go to those residents?
So, that was, thank you, all the person. This, the reason why that went away is because we learned that that was an additional barrier. And these are lessons learned. For people that don't have enough to start school without knowing where the resources will continue, the capacity to pull that off wasn't there. Now, what we learned with a support-first model, it allows them then to see what else they could do. It enhances opportunities for them. Quick story on one of the families about self-care. There was this family whose daughter never had a chance to go to any summer enrichment program. Mom always had to say, "Don't have it, can't do it. We just don't have the resources." For the first time, she says, "My daughter had a chance to go to a summer enrichment program." And it was just, not just for socialization, but that expands opportunity and networks for young people. We want to see more families have those chances. We want to see opportunity abounding with the Level Up program.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a number of questions. One is Bob. I know that we're talking about '25 here, but '26, there's an earmark for water bills. I'm unsure if we can pay ourselves with our own money because we are the supplier of water. So, this is something to think about for next year, unless I'm incorrect about that?
No, you are, you are correct. So, the question is, is do we funnel it through Project Now or do we look for forgiveness?
Right.
And then, just forgive the, the...
This is a 2026 question.
Yeah.
I, I like the intern for case management and I personally am happy with the 10% increase for the admin cost. My question is around, are we being overly ambitious by committing to more households before we finish this cycle and seeing like a, a final result? And, and so, I, I, we want to help everyone. We have a limited pot of money from cannabis and that is going to diminish as the market becomes more saturated. So, my fear is if we commit to more and more households as time goes on, we're going to have to start going from the general fund and other funding sources and that could be a problem. I'm just thinking as we're trying to like segment where the money comes from.
Do you, do, I think you may have mentioned to me there, there are people sort of on a waiting list.
Oh, without question. We were inundated with the number of Moline residents that were trying to get into this program. Kathy, who's behind me, Kathy Jordan, who has a firsthand account of these experiences. Their staff had to live with stomach aches because they heard the story, saw the conditions. And Level, Class A was already full. And then, we were working with a limited pot, moving those resources to secure people. The need is so great. We had a cap at 2,000. People were walking in with a $4,000 to $5,000 ask. We couldn't move in that direction one step, but these are the kind of realities that people are facing. And they trust us with the process. We believe that we can trust the process itself. And to, to your point, Alderman, that the idea of prudence and understanding how we step carefully is something that we appreciate and value as well. Our ask is simply because we end up starting on our end with the faces. I report numbers, but I've seen their faces. I've heard their stories. And I've seen the miserable condition where some of them are in. So, our ask is on their behalf and how we manage this. The good thing about this, we're matching dollars too. So, we're going out and finding whatever we can do, whatever is invested on this end, is to try to find another dollar of investment on our end to do whatever we can to get them up to a place where they can step up and out and move forward in their life. To get some type of stability because it's hard going down and up so often.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
As we think about the program moving forward, I, I recognize as we're looking at you, it's, it's a large investment into an individual place or it feels like that large investment. But I also know that from reading, I've done things on my own, provided by Project Now, that if we don't go in with that large investment, we're just creating more that's going to come up later. And whether that comes back to this City Council to pay for it, it certainly is coming back to that person's paying for it. Our community as a whole is paying through it, through unpaid bills, through the eviction process, through all of these pieces. I wish we could answer every single person that needed it on this, but I, I know that's not going to be possible. So, I just, I, I think I'd like to see this moving forward. My one concern actually with, is, I mean, I'd like to keep an eye on, as we go forward, and I'm hoping we do, I'd like to see that. As we graduate people from that class, I'd like, if we, you said, trying to stay in touch and keeping it updated to see, do we find that maybe we would have needed to extend it to allow them to be in for two years? Whether a year is that right piece? This is something new and, and I think we have to make that effort in order to give the most, most people an opportunity. But I, I do want us to be aware of if we see like, hey, maybe we need to make changes. That's...
Thank you for the sensitivity on that. Many people that make investments in the work to move people up and out of poverty, sometimes they believe within a short period of time, we're dealing with childhood trauma. We're dealing with domestic and sexual violence. We're dealing with health crises. People that have been generationally poor. We're dealing with people that have had a major disruption in life. And to be able to do all those things in one set amount of time can be difficult. We journey as far. What we want to do is celebrate those who have come through and hold a private reception for all the participants in Class A. Because it's not easy staying in contact, working through all of this, sharing the most vulnerable parts of your life with people. We want to celebrate that. We find that people move further in community. So, if we can celebrate together and say, "Listen, the resources we received, invite the city personnel and Council to come and join and shake a few hands." People feel like they've accomplished something that they had the support that they needed. And they, it breeds community pride and a sense of ownership for the city of Moline as well.
I will say, in the research I've done, that there are cities across the country that do it for a two-year period. They even do 500 per month instead of 400, but they tend to be larger cities.
That's right. They tend to be larger.
Was there another question?
Yeah, if I can have one more question. I just, I, I was more curious about Part B. You had some information on the Part A families, but I was wondering, first of all, like, how much, like, how much of a percentage do you have of that left for the remaining, what, four months of the, of the year in that Part B, that, that amount? And what types of... I would love to hear about, and this is not for now, but like, at, at the end of the year, like, what types of assistance was provided for those types of asks? I can imagine that there are a variety, but...
That's what this slide is.
Yeah.
This slide.
Yeah. But is there, I mean, is there still funds left or is like, how quickly are you guys working with that?
That fund went extremely fast. We had to pause to make sure that we didn't promise an opportunity that we didn't have resources in case managers go through the pipeline to make sure everyone that was welcome to receive the fund would have that. That side of the house goes very quickly. Crises and people, right now, one out of two Americans are one paycheck away of not being able to pay their mortgage or rent. So, that's the kind of expenses people have. One out of five can't afford their energy bill. And last year for light heat alone, you can see the number that we matched with, $46,000. But light heat alone, we moved, the average payment was $852 for an average payment of light heat. So, those crises, that's, that's, that's the category that moves so fast for us.
So, I guess my question is, since that one goes so fast, do you not think that it would be better to fund that one at a higher level rather than adding the additional 10 families for the $400 a month? Is there a reason that you wouldn't?
It, so, the, the balance is, again, most of the people that are crisis engaged are normally more stable. This will catapult them down. So, every dollar we invest on this end keeps them on their feet. It's easier to keep a family on their feet than to try to pick them up off the floor. On this end, we have a, a group of residency that unless they get the resources, to your point, Alderman, that we're going to be paying so much more over time to get them up. And the more engagements and negative impacts of poverty will, will be theirs to experience, unfortunately. So, these are the hard decisions. I'm open to questions, query, conversations about it. But what I am most thankful for is that this body, of course, David Dr. King said that we're wasting and demeaning human life by clinging on to old ways of thinking. Nothing about poverty cannot be solved in our lifetime. What you have said is that you are willing to do things differently, think differently, approach it differently, and make investments that we all will yield a lifetime of return. The proverb says that once you pick up a stick by one end, you have essentially picked up the stick at both ends. We can lift the entire city with this program.
Thank you very much. And feel free to follow up with any of our presenters today, you know, after this evening. Thank you so much. We'll continue on. 5.7 Humility Homes and Services, Inc., Ms. Fellas.
Hello. Is that working? That works. Good evening. Thank you for having me today. I'm talking about our street outreach partnership that we currently have with the city of Moline. So, I'll talk a little bit about just humility homes in general and then about the partnership. A lot of what I've already heard and echoed is how it's a public-private partnership and especially when it comes to tackling the affordable housing crisis and working with people who are experiencing literal homelessness. It really is a public-private partnership in that, not just in the business realm. So, a little bit about us. We've been around since 1990. We started as a housing agency for women and children and we've emerged and kept growing to what the community needs us to be. We're founded by the Sisters of Humility and their mission is to take care of the earth and one and all. And so, that is where we have continued to move forward and always been ever-changing. Our primary office is in Davenport, but we do serve five counties in Illinois, three counties in Iowa. It's actually switching to five counties in Iowa because we just added a Department of Justice Supportive Housing Grant. So, people experiencing homelessness, we do serve them in our shelter in Iowa with the intention of housing them back in Illinois, either with partnerships such as, such as Project Now with their rapid rehousing or with our own rapid rehousing program and our permanent supportive housing program. Our mission is to end homelessness by providing housing opportunities and supportive in the greater Quad Cities. Just some quick facts. and supportive in the greater Quad Cities. Just some quick facts. We started as one property in nineteen ninety, and we are now at a little over a hundred and fifty in both Iowa and Illinois. We served thirteen hundred individuals last year, two hundred and fifty individuals from the city of Moline alone, primarily through our street outreach program. We house, we do more than shelter. We do more housing than we do sheltering. We helped reduce veteran homelessness to a net zero in twenty twenty. And then our average rate for someone going from homelessness to housing of their choice is fifty percent, which is double the state of Iowa. I'm not sure in Illinois, though. So things that we believe, some things that Reverend Ford already echoed. You know, over fifty percent of Quad citizens pay more than thirty percent of their income to mortgage, to their mortgage and to their rent. Vacancy rates are the lowest they've been since nineteen eighty-five. Vacancy rates for rentals is about less than six percent across the entire Quad Cities. In some areas that are ruled, it's as low as two percent. So we're facing a pretty big crisis of housing, and that is where a lot of it starts with street outreach and sheltering. Over five hundred and fifty individuals, it should say, should sleep in outside or in shelters or places not meant for habitation throughout the Quad Cities. And the most housing coming, housing problem is just the cost burden for it. And homeowners are also seeing that their cost burden is going up too. So our program, Street Outreach, Emergency Shelter, Rapid Rehousing, Veteran Services, Supportive Housing, and then our Mission-Focused Housing, which is our affordable rental. So in the city of Moline, we provide street outreach services primarily. That is what our ask is for. We also house people through emergency shelter and rapid rehousing and our veterans programs. Our Mission-Focused Housing, we do own a house in Moline. It's a triplex. It does need some extensive work currently, but that is three units that are not online because of a tornado damage and insurance, and it's a whole thing. But we're twerking to get it going. So the request from the city of Moline is direct funding support for our street outreach. Danny Teague is the outreach worker. He spends about seventy-five percent of his time in Moline, twenty-five percent in East Moline and Kelowna. He is primarily supported currently through the request and the assistance from the city of Moline last year through winter emergency shelter funding. So by direct, by investing directly into Danny and by putting in services, we have been able to get direct numbers and form a partnership also with the, the police department, where he's responded on first shift and second shift to individuals who are sleeping outside. The police department had a lovely map that they saw of individuals where they're sleeping. Danny was able to align it with his map that he uses. And then we received funding from Rock Island County Mental Health Services to invest in a new program called Mission Tracker, which will allow us to provide even more of a map, different services, and hone in more on reasons why for street outreach, ways to help, where they're at, last zip code, and then a dollar amount to say, what is the actual number? Do you need to address the issue within your city? So the ask is for forty-one thousand eight eighty-seven this first year, and then we've increased it each year for salary increases, stability funds. It will primarily cover salary, emergency supplies such as socks, water, things that you need to do when you're meeting with somebody who's sleeping unsheltered. A lot of the individuals that we see that are sleeping on the streets of Moline or in the parks is significantly due to mental health. And so that takes a lot of initial building and relationship building to even convince them to come to shelter, come into housing, work on that. There are some individuals that you can just move into housing, that it was a one-time thing, but a lot of individuals that we're seeing are not. It really is a greater need to talk more about services, but the initial piece is to start with street outreach. So last year, he's, two hundred and fifty individuals. Yep, talked about that a little bit. And then just Ricky was, he's from Rock Island County, but just a quote and stories. Like Reverend Ford said, I see it every day. I talk to them. I see the people. I mean, even when we met with the mayor and Chris and KJ and the police, you know, who are talking about individuals that we've seen for years and were like, yep, we're aware of who they are, we know, but it's building that relationship and then keep coming and targeting them. And then Ariel, too. And then just contact. I'm good. Sorry.
Good job. Good job. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Questions from the council? Yes, Ms. Fitch.
I see emergency sheltering. Do you guys have domestic violence shelters, too?
We do not. We work with Family Resources for it, but their, their shelter is always at capacity. And so we do have individuals that come to us due to domestic violence, and we do the best that we can to try to keep them safe. But we've always made it aware that, you know, we can't turn your visa away if they come in. So if you do have order protection, we can honor it. If you do have a picture, we can work with that. But we really then try to get them into services. Or it was in this last fiscal year, we actually had an officer from the city of Moline bring someone to us because they couldn't go to Family Resources, and so they were able to come to us. And then they lived in Hillsdale, which wasn't far. The mom did, so we've transported her home. Well, also then, some of that money would go even towards bus, bus tickets to be like, you have a family member somewhere. Great, I can get you there. So that's what the unrestricted dollars come in for. Yeah.
Other questions from the council? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Youth Commission Funding Request, Kristy Vermulon. Do we have a representative?
She's online.
She's online. Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor, and good evening, City Council. My name is Kristy Vermulon, and I am the city staff liaison for the Moline Youth Commission. We are asking for your consideration to raise our funding budget from ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars for the budget year of twenty twenty-five. As of today, the Youth Commission has had over twenty-seven thousand dollars in funding requests for twenty twenty-four. We continue to be approached by youth-oriented groups and organizations that have funding needs and struggle to gain adequate support. By investing in our youth, we are saying we believe in the future of our community and our world. With your help, we can provide opportunity and connection for the youth in Moline. Thank you for your consideration. Kind of short and sweet.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions at this time? Ms. Castro.
As I was looking at the list of the programs and organizations that you fund, I would, the majority of these are for the Moline School District or programs for the district, I guess, except for like the Little League and the youth football. Are there other types of programs that you support for, like, students who may be not in the Moline School Districts?
Yes, so we do have some. Like you mentioned before, we have the Moline Little League. We did a partnership with the Quad City Pickleball Club, where we gave scholarships to Moline youth for a tournament they ran. I'm trying to think. And a lot of them do come from the high school or through the schools. A lot of those don't have booster clubs or various backing through athletics. So that's why I think we see a higher number there. If that answers your question a little?
Do you have, I mean, do you have like a working plan for next year? What other types of things that you would like to fund?
Yes, so we are actually in the process of kind of getting a plan together. We would really like to support more mental health initiatives in the area. I know that's a big problem we're seeing with youth. And so we are working on partnering with an organization currently. We haven't yet, so we're doing a lot of research just to kind of see what's out there and what the community needs, so.
All right, thank you. Great. So Kristy, that means that's the outgrowth of conversation from last spring when we said, hey, how can we be more, more targeted in what we do? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I was looking forward to that update.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I also noticed that there was a high overlap of school district-funded organizations, and my fear is that we're kind of double-dipping tax dollars. But as I look at it again, there's a lot of sports here, and I would like to, obviously, once money goes to the commission, I have no say about how it's spent. But my personal opinion is that there's more than sports. There's more ways to reach children than sports. I appreciate the Women in STEM, for example. I think run and read includes run, but it's reading as well. But you're mentioning youth of Rock Island County. You're, you're talking about mental health, so I would encourage to go in that direction. A lot of the kids in sporting groups already have support, and I would love to reach children that don't.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Thank you very much. We'll move to our next item. Nine point, excuse me, five point nine, Public Art Commission Funding Request, Mr. Mathias.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Council. I came to you in July and really discussed this topic with you. We talked about at that time, a lot of the projects that the Public Art Commission would like to take on, the main one being the Leading Light Project, which is, as you can see from the attached document to our request, will basically take most of their money next year of what the Public Art Commission... That's assuming that they get seventy-five thousand next year in the budget. So obviously, that's our minimal ask, is to get that seventy-five thousand again. We're asking to up that to a hundred and seventy-five thousand so that we can... You can, you can see from the, from that list of projects there, with another hundred thousand, we can continue with some of those other mural projects around the city that they're looking at. We've also looked at some lighting projects under overpasses and things, but we want to implement that public art plan. It's going to take money to do that. So that is the request with me here as the staff liaison for our Public Art Commission making that request. So I know you'll probably hear from some of those folks that are on the commission as we go through the budget season. Happy to answer any questions that you have on that.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Mr. Timmy.
Thank you, Your Honor. When we set up the Art Commission, it was originally to be funded through the two percent CIP. That clearly is not proven to meet the need. Is it time, do you think, that we revisit funding sources? A lot of thoughts about that, but I want to stay on topic. So that's one question. And, gosh, I guess I'll let you answer. I had another one.
I think that, I think how the funding would come from the CIP or from economic development projects is something that we do need to talk about because my understanding was there was kind of like, seventy-five thousand was promised. And this is, I'm not going to blame anybody for this. This is understandable why it was built this way. But that, if, if we did have something come in from CIP or economic development, it was going to pay the city back for that seventy-five thousand, right? So if you, if you look at the plan, the original intention was the city would have an investment, and then the public, and then the Public Art Commission would get that one or two percent, however was, however those come in. So I think that needs to be clarified, first of all, as we go through the budget process. Is, will that money be coming to the Public Art Commission, for example, in addition to the seventy-five, or is it paying the city back until we get to that threshold or something? Or, like I said, if we want to consider some other, some other funding sources. But obviously, there's a lot of, I know there's a, the cannabis money seems like a great place for this, but I know there's a lot of competition for that money as well.
Yeah, Mr. Timmy.
My next question is, have we explored, for lack of a better term, getting sponsors for like mural projects instead of relying on the city funding, having corporations sponsor them with a little paid-for-by Logomercino's, you know, at the bottom, so that it's not just coming from the general fund or the cannabis dollars, but there are other funding sources?
As far as I know, that hasn't been explored yet.
Also, along those lines, have we tasked Dawn Temple, a grant writer, with looking into arts-related grant sources?
I'm, I'm due to update with Dawn on a number of things. I think that's like a kind of a constant conversation with her, like, have I asked you about this yet? So that's, I think, another thing to add to the list with Dawn. But she's obviously proven that she's very successful, like with the Arsenal Bridge here, that announcement.
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Mathias.
Thank you. So the Leading Light at the Cube parking, that's separate from the Project Six Shapes and Colors, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we have a grant dollars for that. So I mean, it looks like we have a good amount of projects that could happen in the next, well, in twenty twenty-five. But yeah, you know, seeing the future ones, especially that Project Six, that, that's a hundred thousand. That, that's a pretty price tag for, for that one. I personally love art all over the city. I, I see the buke, and I get jealous myself. But, you know, looking at all the competing areas here that we're looking at, yeah, I, I, I like the first twenty-four, twenty-five, but I can see twenty twenty-six and the future stuff being kind of a challenge, more of a luxury, I guess, in my opinion.
And what I would say about this is, is even if we're, if we're only getting seventy-five thousand for next year, and we'll be grateful for that if we get it, right? But if that's all we're getting, we will be very careful about doing anything other than Leading Light Project, right? As you can see from those numbers, you know, we'll be very, we'll be very conservative about what we do if that's all that we're going to have.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
One thing that, that I would come out to say is, I think it's very important that we provide a level of stability to the funding and keeping that going forward. I know there's been some conversations of pushing back and pulling back from what we originally committed to when the ordinance was passed. I do think that, that we always wanted to see big projects, and it has taken some time to get there. And we've had those smaller projects along the way. But the reality is, at the level we're funding, a big project is going to take several years of planning and getting up to it, and I don't think there's a way around that. When we think about these other projects, though, it, it's hard to look at everything before us and say, yes, we can absolutely go there. But I do think that having a plan and having it as you do laid out with these are the future things and like kind of the next up, I, kind of ideas. I think there may be opportunities as we rebuild that process to say, how do we perhaps be able to take advantage of that in the middle of the year where we say, okay, there's, some funds are coming available in certain places, or it can kind of become part of a larger project, like, like looking at the, the Welcome to Moline sign. If that's in all your downtown, that's going to become a part of a much larger project. So I think that it's going to be difficult to put huge sums of additional money into the planning, but I'd love us to find other ways to bring those together with what we've got going on.
Yeah, and just one thing I'd want to add to that, that this Leading Light Project is really the first major project from the public art plan, right? So that's the main thing we're trying to accomplish here is to implement that plan. Those seven projects that are scattered throughout that plan, they do have a higher price tag.
I guess you can speak, Mr. Harrow. There's overlapping interests.
Well, just a, a comment to the council on, obviously, the relationship that we have with the city and Chris and his team. Public art is vitally important to tourism, and there are statewide grants through DCO and CIAT specific to this. So we want to be a collaborative partner. Let's explore that with Alex and the team at Renew and Chris. But there are specific opportunities that we would be willing to work and write and draft in partnership and go after some of these dollars. I know Rockford has been hugely successful in getting state money specific for public art, and I think this is something that we could do together as your partners. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Anything further from the council? All right, hearing none, we'll move to five point ten, Historic Preservation Commission Funding Request. Ms. Bizzari, you online? Or is that you?
It's going to be you, since Jennifer's not here.
Okay.
I don't have my documentation for everybody, but I know Historic Preservation has asked for some money in the budget. They historically have never had money in the budget, as far as I know. They have some projects they'd like to get done. Some of those involve surveying of the city to really get out there and survey condition houses for possible historic districts and, and money. The other thing is, I know we've talked about the David B. Sears recognition as a project they want to do, so, so it's a request we are making as the liaison for that mission.
Any questions by the council? Yes, Ms. Castro.
I noticed on the request that there was a, something for training and conference for two commission members. Is that common that we pay for trainings and conferences for commission members?
Yes, but you usually don't see it at this level because usually it would just come, kind of, kind of, some of my budget money that I might have for training in general or other...
So is it for members of the commission, or is it for staff members?
This particular request would be for members of the commission because otherwise you wouldn't have seen that on here.
Okay, well, I completely can't get behind that, I'll tell you right now. I, I tried to clarify that with Mr. Vitas before this meeting. I don't think it's a good look for the commission to be getting what could essentially be seen as a perk for being a member of a commission that is an appointed position. And, and I, I just will say that I think professional development should come out of the city's HR plans, right? That I don't, I don't know that that part of this request makes sense to me.
I can understand that, Mayor. But I will say, you know, planning commissioner training, for example, is, is something that's happened in the past, right? Where you try and educate the planning commissioners on what proper planning is, how they don't get sued, things like that. So to us, this is something that's not that far off base, but I do understand...
That's different than going to a conference someplace else. See what I mean? Yeah. Mr. Timmy?
Along those lines, this training, are there online equivalents, or are they in-person only?
There's, there's certainly plenty of online options for training nowadays. And I don't know the specific, you know, class that was looked at here for this, but there's certainly plenty of options for online training, too.
Great. Anything further? Hearing none, we will move on. Thank you. That concludes our presentations. Is there a public comment this evening, Chief? All right, you have three minutes, Ms. Erickson. That's our standard. And Chief keeps the timer.
I wrote it out so I could just read it, and then I wouldn't waste too much time. I'm here to represent the, put a face on the Level Up program, okay? So, dear Mayor and council members, I'm here to let you know what a positive impact the Level Up program has had on my life. I am a Moline homeowner since nineteen eighty-four. In May of twenty twenty-three, I suffered a debilitating debilitation that left me unemployed and resulted in a pelvic, complex pelvic reconstruction up in Mayo, Rochester, Minnesota, in January of this year. After spending six weeks in skilled nursing, I came home on crutches. Since the first part of March, I have been in physical therapy three days a week. And I can walk, I can up the steps. Today was my last day of physical therapy. I graduated today. This four hundred dollars a month, which started in March of this year, has paid my property taxes, repaired my car. I had a Ford Edge I bought with all my savings before this happened. It's paid for travel to Mayo, hotels to stay there, as well as plumbing and carpentry repairs at my home and other household sundried expenses. And I have been unable to make ends meet with just my social security. You know, your Homer's insurance goes up, your auto insurance goes up. You have all of your bills. They come every month, and they max out what I have. I use Saint Mary's Food Bank, thank God. I used all my savings to buy a car before the injury and before I became unemployable. I can walk now, and I have a part-time substitute teaching position at Seton Catholic School in Moline. It's a sporadic schedule. It's just started the last part of August. And I would not be able to live on this job without the Level Up Grant. I am a registered nurse and continue to apply for office medical positions. In the meantime, Level Up has made all the difference. Thank you for using the marijuana tax money so that a Moline homeowner in crisis can survive the difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joyce, for sharing your... Thank you so much, Joyce, for sharing your story, being vulnerable enough to share that with us.
Yeah, I I started out this journey last year because I just had surgery in January, and it's been going on since May of last year. I went to the Illinois Iowa Center for Independent Living on Eleventh Street in Rock Island and Fifth Avenue. And they said they had a supplemental emergency assistance program. It never came about. And finally, somewhere March or end of February this year, this Maria King let me know that if I'm a homeowner in Moline, a Moline resident, that this program was available. I went to Alternatives for Older Adults. They said, since I was not on Medicaid, they could not help me. And thank God, I did have insurance, so I could pay for this very big surgery and all the rehabilitation. But they did put handrails down my basement steps because they had a in-office emergency fund. They put railings down my basement steps and bought me one of those roll later carts that you roll around on because I couldn't walk. I was on narcotics and my leg shortened three inches. It was really quite serious. But things have turned around, and I'm very sensed, I'm very happy to hear that sensitive comment about, should this be a two-year program? Okay, it's here, it is September, and I still have one more quarter of taxes to pay. And, you know, it's gonna end soon, and hopefully I will have some stable employment by the time this is ended. So that's all.
Thank you so much. All right. Questions on the agenda is our next item. There is one update. Item seventeen point one appeared on the September ten agenda under consent agenda resolutions. There was a Scrivener's error, as this should have been on the non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. This item will appear tonight as non-consent agenda second reading ordinances. Okay? So with that, we move to our committee of the whole agenda items. Eight point one, a resolution approving a special event that is sponsored by the Saint Mary's Catholic Church with the parish carnival scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event. Mr. Vitas?
Pretty straightforward, Mayor and Council. We recommend approval at the staff level.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point two, an ordinance amending Chapter Five Amusements of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section five dash one one oh one C, by increasing the number of video gaming terminal-licensed establishments in the city at the request of Nick Bowes, potential purchaser of Rosie's Watering Hole, seventeen thirty-one, Seventh Street, Moline. Mr. Vitas? Or council? Or the clerk?
Go ahead, Council.
The applicant, Nick Bowes, is purchasing the corporation that currently owns Rosie's. Rosie's has gaming terminals, so to continue to provide those to patrons, he needs to reapply for that license.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Ms. Castro.
I just have a question. So to clarify, we're actually not at, I mean, we are adding it, but then the current owner is relinquishing his, so it's basically.
Keeping it level.
Keeping it level, right? Yeah, okay. So we're not actually, we are adding it, but we're not having any more.
Right. So under Chapter Five, like tobacco licenses, when a gaming license expires or is turned in, then the number automatically drops.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point three, an ordinance amending Chapter Four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section four dash thirty-one oh four, number of licenses, by increasing the number of Class B tavern licenses in the city at the request of Dieter and Nancy Rebitser, Rebitser's Bar and Grill, Illinois LLC, current owners of Broken Saddle, fourteen seventeen, Fifth Avenue, Moline. I'll also turn that to council.
Okay, thank you. Broken Saddle has been there for a number of years. They always had a Class B tavern license. They switched last year to Class A, which is a restaurant license. They've tried there for a year. That has not proven successful. They want to change back to a Class B tavern license. We are at the cap in the code for tavern licenses. So as we have done in the past, we seek an increase of their number.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I just want to say, I think this makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that the business said we're looking for an opportunity of how we might grow, how we might do something differently. I think there's advantages and disadvantages to making that switch. And and the fact that it's not working out is certainly not a reason for us to punish them until, you know, I think letting them go back to where they were, they they'll appreciate their efforts and appreciate that they'll they'll continue to operate as they are, so.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point four, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-two, offenses miscellaneous of of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-two dash one one oh five, tobacco products, tobacco accessories, smoking herbs, and alternative nicotine products, subsection B one, by increasing the number of tobacco dealers' licenses in the city at the request of Pipe Dreams. Is there a motion? All right. Eight point four fails for lack of emotion. We move to our informationals. What, I just want to pull the council right now. Would we like to take a five-minute break? Because we know we have an hour and a half budget work session coming. Yes?
Hopefully less.
Do I need all in favor to take that break, or?
No, you can just.
All right. We're taking a break. Please come back in five minutes. Are the council back together? We're missing just one older person right now. He will be joining us. Mr. Macias, thank you for coming back in. Thank you, everyone.
Did you forget about Timian?
Oh, yeah. Oops, there he is. There's so many people tonight. Okay. We move to our informationals. You're not up first, so I'll talk to Mr. Brown first. And nine point one, annual outside city limits utility customers list.
As required pursuant to thirty-four dash twenty-one oh four C, I'm presenting the outside utility customers list for this year. It is unchanged from last year. So we have twenty-four properties that are eligible to annex right-of-way. And then we have twenty-seven properties that are non-contiguous but receive city services and do not have a pre-annexation agreement. So I believe last year, the rates were increased for outside customers in hopes that maybe it would nudge some customers to annex. That does not seem to be the case. So no change from last year.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt. And we told them, here's how you get out of the higher rates.
I'm not sure if we've told them in those terms, but.
It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be an incentive to get them to sign a pre-annexation agreement.
Yeah, I I can add to this because at the time, it was it was Tony I was working with, Tony Looney, and David Silverman, our little counsel. And in short, in short of, in short, we're not able to get them to budge, even with a three-hundred percent increase, some of them. And there are those who would consider coming in, but they can't because the property in between them and us refuses, even though they have our utility. So you're looking at legal action. It will be legal action that will force us to get them to come in. It's the only way it's gonna happen. And I don't know if we want to expense all that money and court time. Be honest with you, it will not be cheap.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Because for any of these that are eligible to annex, need petition, are those ones that would be required to by an agreement, or that's because they do not have an agreement?
I understand that they do not have an agreement, and they do not have any interest.
And I feel like I've brought this up before. I I agree with Mr. Vitas, not, I mean, I don't think there's a lot to gain from expending into huge lawsuits and pushing forward on those things. I I think one idea worth exploring is to offer them automatic annexation at the time of sale, and we will stop bugging you about doing it for as long as you own the property. I mean, that's just, it's, I recognize it doesn't solve a problem for actually decades, but.
Here's here's part of what what's going on as well. I mean, theoretically, I mean, you could, because some of them had, they they were provided water with the understanding they would connect, they would connect, and then they would annex. You you could effectively shut the water. That's easy to do. You could force them, you could force their hand. You cannot do that with those who have sewer-only, because you can't plug source. You're just not gonna do that. EPA is not gonna allow that, you know? And I've worked in cities where they did that, and they backed up into the wrong houses. So it's not a good idea at all, you know? And you have to realize that at the time when this was going on, and history is revealing itself, the longer we we work at it, you know, there are agreements out there in your Tiff area number seven, and outside of your Tiff area number seven, where we have businesses that were provided with utilities with the understanding that they would never be annexed in agreement with the airport authority. So there are some really unusual things that took place during that era that have gone largely unexplained and remain difficult to understand as to why we did what we did. You know, anything to do in and around the airport was 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 highly, I don't know, contagious, politicized, involving the county, involving the airport, involving property owners. So we have some very unique agreements, some of which I've never seen, frankly, before. I quite like it. You know, we have reviewed those. Margaret, you want to add anything to some of this? It's it's a little perplexing. How do you unwind this mess short of litigation or shutting off water to people, you know? And I wouldn't recommend shutting water up to people. It's just not not the nice thing to do.
Okay. Anything further from the council? Thank you very much. Ms. Barnes, so happy to see you. Excited to get this budget work going. And I just want to give a short preamble before we start that I generally do every year, which is, we all care about the city and the citizens of Moline. We might have some varying priorities, but if we come to this work, assuming the best of each other, we will get through this process well. So just a little reminder. Turning it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And I might just kind of give you a heads up. It's probably gonna take us between an hour to an hour and a half. If we, we might be able to speed through some of the things, but I want to make sure that you're comfortable before we move on. But I'll try to keep going as quick as as what I can. And just to start this off, before we head into page one, if I can let me get Lori the little marker, that in addition to the enterprise fee review tonight that we typically do in September, we have added a couple of budget items for discussion in an effort to minimize our Saturday work session that's coming up now in October twenty-sixth. And we're just hoping to get a jump start on everything. For the enterprise fee review tonight, and that's a little bit down the road here, we are looking for council to give us direction so that we can update our current ordinances with the updated fee schedules for our October eighth meeting. And the reason we like to do that is that gives us time then to get everything changed and updated in our software so that it's effective for January first. So at the end of the day, we're gonna be looking for direction. For all other items that we're talking about tonight, what we're looking for is a nod. It's not a final decision, but it is a nod to place these items in the budget for October twenty-sixth for your final review and consideration. Getting your direction tonight helps us try and helps us with trying to balance the budget. And there's huge impacts on the general fund on some of these issues tonight. So it's, it will be very helpful to know that if you're in favor of it, or just to give us direction. So with that, we're gonna start on page one, go to the next one. And this year, we have received one million, three hundred and seven thousand dollars in funding requests for two thousand and twenty-five. That's up nearly a hundred and sixty thousand or thirteen point eight percent from last year. And that is that first green column all the way down the row. You'll see one point three oh seven compared to the one million, one forty-eight. So it's a lot of money that we give to our outside agencies, and we just want to make sure that the council is is very comfortable with with the dollars that we have placed here tonight. Most of the requests were for three-year askings, but just as a reminder, every single year, we will ask these agencies to come back, again, make formal requests, and to review the services that they provide to us for the dollars that we're giving them. And with that, you have heard presentations from almost every single one of these agencies. So what I'd like to do is just kind of go down very, very quickly. We're gonna zero really in on twenty-five because that's the year that we're actually gonna be adopting the budget for. And then placeholders will be for twenty-six and twenty-seven. So we're just kind of looking at a direction whether or not we can kind of place this in the budget. You'll vote on it back in October twenty-six. So with that, we're just gonna go right down the row. I'm gonna go kind of quickly. Renew Moline, their asking for twenty-five was a hundred thousand dollars. We're actually going to be splitting it between six Tiff funds this year. Last year, it was the same asking, but it was between four funds. But we have added Tiff number fourteen and number fifteen, so that kind of helps spread out the burden of that. Again, their asking for the three years is staying the same for each of those three years. For the, I'm just gonna keep moving unless you have questions.
Oh, do you want, do you want responses now?
We can have it at the bottom. We can do it one by one.
I think we should do it one by one.
Perfect. That's very helpful.
It stays organized. That's very helpful. So thoughts from the council on the Renew ask? Thumbs up. The nod is thumbs up for the majority. Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the Moline Center. Again, their asking is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This is staying the same again as last year. This funding is split between the general fund and both of our current SSAs, SSA five and number six. So a zero percent increase, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. In future years, they have asked for five percent increases. And again, we'll address that next year when when they come back. But for a placeholder, we'd like to put that funding in just to kind of earmark it tentatively.
So so actually, we're contributing the least, the SSAs are contributing the most to funding Moline Center?
Yes.
Thank you.
I should make one more comment. In addition to the hundred and twenty-five thousand, there is twenty-six thousand dollars that is part of the CED budget that helps fund the holiday hops and all those out, kind of outside activities. So there is twenty-six thousand dollars in that CED budget for twenty-five, similar to last year.
All right. Thoughts from the council? Positivity, keeping it even, moving forward. Thank you.
Check. The Moline CDC, this one is actually decreasing by fifty thousand dollars. And so in the past, we have funded the past, I think it's three years now, isn't it?
Three years.
We funded this program through ARPA funds, and as you know, those dollars are coming to an end. And so for twenty twenty-five, this will be the first year that we're funding it through the general fund. So a hundred percent of that fifty thousand will come from the general fund. And they're asking for that same amount for each of the three years.
Thoughts, Mr. Schmidt?
The, sorry, my concern is just thinking about the, moving away from the ARPA funding. And I I get the why, but I'm also wondering if we're allocating money in ARPA funding on things that are gonna take time to get to, would it be more advantageous to say, we know that's getting spent and getting it paid from the ARPA funding for one more year, and then moving the general funding to cover what we're gonna do with the ARPA? And then moving the general funding to cover what we're going to do with the ARPA funding on a project that maybe won't happen by the deadline? I'm starting to get nervous as we approach the end of the ARPA funding deadline. So part of my mind says, why don't we apply to anything we can and move things around?
No, that's a, that's a very good concern. Bob and I have talked extensively about this. We revisited some of the projects and as we hit that on one of the last items tonight, we've actually reprioritized a few of them to try to get the money out the door so that in 2026, which is our final year, I think there's only a balance of about $305,000.
I'm looking at it right now and Carol, you are correct. It's 305,000 and it's in restricted projects and programs and it is to the water infrastructure.
Yeah, okay.
And we directly need it there. Charlie will attest based on the last break.
But you have a very valid point. We, we absolutely, it has to be utmost importance that we are spending through those ARPA dollars.
I, I think it's good if council feels free to express their thoughts just on what MCDC does, et cetera. As, as a person who sits on that board on behalf of the city, and I know Alderman Razak is also there as a requirement to have city leadership there. Things they do are really valuable, but I've also seen the process where they need to move to being self-sustaining. They have known that and it's been difficult, right? Because they lost an executive director that was there for a while and now they have another one. So there's been some turnover. But given where priorities have been and continue to be when I talk with council members, I, I'm comfortable with this. And I think in the long run, the board members will be as well, or they may have to be. But I think, I appreciate the thoughtfulness on our budget side for something that we can still work in partnership to, to make successful. But there's a responsibility there for them to take over that cost. Anybody else on MCDC? We're seeing mostly thumbs up or head nods approval for what you've recommended.
Okay, the next one is the Quad City Chamber. They gave their presentation tonight and they talked about their asking here on our calendar year would be for $71,744, incrementally going up each of the next two years. But again, they will come back next year and be asking for that funding. But these would be placeholders for 26, 27. So we're looking for council direction for 25.
Mr. Schmidt?
I think they mentioned, we're currently in the five, this, in the final year of an agreement of that.
That is correct.
Fourth year.
So is this for the funding for the first of the new contract or the last of the old?
This is the last of the old and it's locked in for 25, that's what I thought.
Already signed that one, right?
I think we already gave them money too.
All right, so that's the thumbs up from the council.
Easy enough.
You read that right.
The visit Quad Cities, again, they were here tonight. They are funding, again, they are on a fiscal year, we're on a calendar year. With the projected hotel motel tax that we have coming in, we anticipate that that amount that we will be giving visit Quad Cities is about $412,500. That will vary with actual hotel motel tax receipts. And just so you know, I just, just an FYI, for 2023, at our old rate, the 17.85, it was $293,830. So it's in excess of $100,000 additional money that we anticipate. So hopefully they can do a lot of things with those funds.
Okay, thumbs up mostly, head nods.
No one's committed to one symbol or the other.
I'll switch it up.
Then we've got the Moline Commission on the Youth. Again, they are asking for $15,000. Their current ask was $10,000. We actually had budgeted about $14,000. We've given them 10 in the current year, but they're asking for $15,000 each of the next three years.
Until I heard that they had actually come to a consensus on what special project they want to undertake, I was not in favor of upping it by another 5,000. Getting to 10,000 was already 5,000 more than the year before or two years before. So it's not as if we haven't been trying to walk the talk on investing in our children. I think if there are other, I personally think if there are other programs that we think need that 5,000 to sort of even out things, so, so, you know, in the long run, the levy can be really stable. I wouldn't move it to 15, that's my personal opinion.
As I was looking at the list of things that they, that they fund, as, there are a lot of other organizations that do the same type of thing, like the Moline Public Schools Foundation or Have Life pays for, you know, students in the Moline School District, sports registrations for, they give money to the Little League. They give money to youth football and youth basketball. So it's almost, it's, there are other organizations that pay for the same types of things that they're paying for. And I did like what she said about like working into mental health, but I would like to see some kind of like plan or some kind of, I would like to see something of what they're planning on doing with it before we promise the funds.
When you say it like that and adding what I've mentioned, I, it feels to me like something that could come from council contingency when they have a program put together or that partnership put together. Because more than likely, it's not going to be a high-ticket item when it's a partnership like that. I, I don't know what the council thinks of that. Maybe we put a pause on this or you make a recommendation on the 26th not to go quite as high, I don't know. Mr. Schmidt?
I agree with the need to have a focus and a criteria in what they're trying to do. I do not have major qualms with us making donations in areas where other people also do because I think that usually when you have people asking for multiple help, it's because there is multiple, there's more need than can be satisfied in one source. I do think, as I think about that criteria, I like some of the things on that list more than others when it's focused on people who cannot afford registrations as opposed to just going into the general program. I mean, the scholarships and those sorts of things, I think I like the most. I do, I would like to see a program of growing, of what that's going to mean. I'm also curious, we approved $14,000, but just only allocated 10? Or how, how is that?
We had, we had put a budget in there of 14, but their ask was only for 10. So we've given them 10.
So I would say at least carry forward to 14 and, because we can keep the money from over that last year that would then fill at least that much of the hole. I'm inclined to increase it, though I do think that stick of saying, hey, let's get a more focused program makes sense.
So with that feedback, do you have enough or to, go ahead, Mr. McNeil?
I just, the document that we have, it says, no, these are requests, not awarded amounts. So the total is 27,000. So unless there's something else, I'm not sure if we know what they've awarded, right? Other than the bullets, but at what amounts? Or did I miss something?
Yeah, I don't think they gave us the, you would have the record of where everything went, correct?
And I don't need that today, but just...
That's okay, let me just see if by chance, I've got something here in my... On the letter, on page 12, Lori. I don't know if you can, if they can see the letter up here. But it does say that the Youth Commission is asking for your consideration in raising our funding budget from 10 to 15 in 25 for Moline's. And then their total budget was 27.5. Is that answering your question?
No, he wanted to know where everything went this last year.
Oh, where, oh, where our, where our money?
Well, no, what they are funding, types of programs. It's like before Alderman and Timian was talking about, they fund a lot of sports.
Yes.
I don't know if we know that.
We could certainly ask for that.
Well, from the list that's in the letter, it's not at what level.
Yeah, so, so this is to be continued, it sounds like, the, the feedback you needed. Or is that we're a little bit, I think, please correct me if I'm misunderstanding the wishes of this council, but that might be okay to continue the same funding level we've had. But in order to get any kind of increase, there'd have to be more clarity on what they want to do. I don't know if that's, like, I'd have to talk with council about what's in the code regarding what they... I, I know they're supposed to be researching and making recommendations to us. We certainly can go back and look for funds out of council contingency once they get to that level. But that sounds like where we're at, you can work with 14?
Yeah, so that's, that's the question, is it 14 for 25? Is that what we're saying, 14 or 10?
I don't know, Mr. Timian?
My thought was 10, carry over the 10 from 24 to 25. And we have a large contingency for this very reason.
And, and we'll come back then and revisit it on our Saturday work session.
Certainly, I agree. But we'll put 10 in. I'm seeing heads nod mostly for it being at 10.
Yep.
Not, Mr. Schmidt, but you can vote in on the 26th. Okay.
Okay. Next up, moving up, moving on then to Humility Homes. Their request tonight that they reviewed was for $41,888 in 25. And then going up to $44,000 for 44 in 26 and another up to 47,231 in 27. And just for fut- for a reference point, in 2022, we paid them $3,500, $3,500. In 2023, we gave them $35,000 at the very end of the year. And then for 2024, it's $20,000, so.
So we've been up and down?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Timian?
If we don't fund this, our police officers aren't doing the work. This is kind of what I'm hearing, talking to Ashley and, and others. And so I feel like this is a much more cost-effective way to do the same work. And the fact is, is the police are referring people to the outreach coordinator. So they're kind of an extension of us. I am inclined to fund the full ask.
Yes, Mr. McNeil?
I'd be interested to know, she said that a large percentage of the $41,000 ask was for staff. She even mentioned him by name. So if, if we fund this, that $20,000, is she able to maintain that staff member?
That's the idea, I believe, but I wouldn't, don't want to speak for her. Ms. Castro?
Well, I believe when she was talking, she said that they used the money that we had allocated for the emergencies, emergency shelter for that position, that she used that $30,000 for that position. So that was where that came from. So I agree with Alderman person, Timian, I would fund it at the full percent. I mean, of all the presentations that we've heard today, I think that helping residents is the most, the most important thing. And to help people who are in poverty or homeless that can't see better use of our, our dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Vitas?
Sure, just very, very briefly, the reason why this recommendation did not go up is because we still don't know what's going on with, with the big seven. And it's always been contentious. These meetings are horrendous. There was no exception last year. We have exceeded whatever anybody else has given. And I can tell you that at least in the communications that I've seen just between Ashley and Bettendorf, they're, they're, they ask is $10,000, but they ask to us is 41. You know, and I have no objection to the 41, but I think before this council makes a bold commitment before October, I mean, I think we need to hear what the others are doing. And then, because we're all parties to this and, and maybe the needs not as great in Bettendorf as it is here in Moline. But I, I mean, I would support the 41, but I want to know beforehand, I need more information. That's why, that's why I didn't change it.
Yes, Ms. Castro?
She mentioned that this funding is specifically for that position where he spends 75% of his time in the city of Moline. Right, I mean, so to me, I mean...
Right, so we almost have a dedicated person completely for Moline. And I, I think it's important to note that because I don't, I think until this recent, more recent crisis, we haven't as a community really grappled with our homelessness issue, right? It's kind of been out of sight, out of mind. I think now is the time we get to talk about it. But I do think that we need to talk about this kind of payment for services in a kind of holistic way with all the other human services that we want to fund, right? I don't know if you have a way of like sort of putting Level Up and Humility Homes and anything else? MCDC-ish things, you know? Yeah, emergency assistance, right? All of that stuff is in a basket of care for human beings, which as Mr. Schmidt said, if we care for them in really smart, thoughtful ways, now we minimize the cost to the community down the road for sure. And seriously, the cost to our staff in the police department, they have, I don't know if you want to talk about that in terms of diversion of resources for this kind of stuff. But I, I think we can, yes, we can wait for some information, but we're going to have to look at, again, the impact on the levy to invest in these things. How do we want that distribution to look among all of this stuff? And where is it coming from? I think that's, if we look at it in terms of a holistic basket, we'll be able to make a really thoughtful decision. Yes, Chief?
Sure. I don't want to speak specifically for certain agencies, but I can just tell you that I know that Humility provides a couple of different services. I think we might be talking about apples and oranges when we're talking about a couple of other different things like holistically a shelter, which is for the greater Quad Cities, and then an outreach worker that does spend a lot of time in Moline. I don't know how you can structure this, but you know, I would like to see some statistical results from, or some data points from the outreach worker on the contacts that they're making in Moline. You were at the meeting, Mayor, that, that we had, it was not that long ago. I wasn't even aware of that. It has turned into a really good thing for the police department as Alderman, Timian and Alderman Castro have indicated. We don't have the capacity for that, partly because as, as she did mention, these, these take time, right? The, the individuals that they're working with have significant mental health issues. So that's a daily water bottle to just try to get them to talk to somebody. We, we don't have that capacity. We have the capacity to help somebody that's in an acute situation that needs to go to a shelter, right? And, and so ha- having a dedicated worker here doing 75% of the work in Moline, I would say that would be extremely beneficial. I would just like to see some sort of...
Results data, like?
Handcuffed to it without using a pond, I guess, but you know what I mean? Like, like tied to where the money is going.
Okay. That sound like to the council that if we work through the staff to get that data, then we can have a better, more informed discussion about what, how much to fund?
That has been the issue. And you, you nailed it. That is, the contentious issue is getting the data and getting the consistent data from Humility. And that's where all the others around us draw the line. And until they see the data, they don't want to contribute.
Okay.
So we have to get to that conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm inclined to fund at the requested level. I agree, we should be seeking out the data, but I think we will have more of an opportunity to do that with a carrot than with a stick. I think the, the work that is being, being done in that space is often not receiving the funding it needs. People do all the work that needs done. And I think they would say that they cannot serve every homeless person. It's, they're going to have to make choices, they're going to have to only do so much. So every time we, I guess, push down on those resources in the, in that interest, it just provides less of that service. And I would be okay, okay with even saying that we intend not to fund if we do not see data in this next year coming to fruition and it would impact us going forward. But I am, I am very concerned about the decision to say we're just going to take our ball and go home, I guess. There's something we know is such a critical.
Well, certainly, staff recommendation isn't zero, it's 20,000, right?
Yep.
Right, so, but I agree with you, or I don't want to say it that way. I want to say, Mr. Vitas is, as you have seen, is a supreme negotiator. And, you know, if Humility needs to hear that all the cities want their data, that we're not going to just roll over, then, then maybe that's the thing that actually tips the scale and they provide what everyone's asking for.
Then we do have a meeting this coming Friday specifically to talk about this, called specifically for this purpose, which doesn't happen. I will just say, we don't meet on specific topics all the time, but this one we are because there's also this commentary in a letter she sent to Decker Plain advising that the winter shelter will not be open this year either. So I need clarity. I mean, it gets, it was a bad winter last year. I don't want to see people out there like we've seen in the past. It's a problem, so we need answers. So we need answers.
Ms. Burke?
I think homelessness is on the rise in Moline. I think we've been insulated. I think if you take a little drive, like I had to do, and open your eyes, you'll see people sleeping places that you wouldn't even think they were sleeping. And I think that we really need to consider this and fund this, because winter is coming. And I don't want to see frozen people.
Thank you. Mr. Macias?
Yeah, and just one last thing. And whatever you negotiate, even if we're the ones that take the first step, it could help with the other cities come to the table. But yes, as for the data, but the bottom line is, we're, we're actually seeing more, it's a humanitarian crisis. It's not, in the past, it was more at the national level, maybe state level, but now more and more municipalities really have to step up, because we're the ones seeing it. You know, it's in, in our neighborhoods, it's in our downtowns. I've seen it. I've seen it.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I went to the, the, I forget the name of the training that Humility Homes had a few months ago. And we met with the outreach people. And one of the important things they pointed out is, again, mental illness is a huge contributing factor for a lot of these folks. And it requires oftentimes six months of relationship building before they can even nudge them into receiving services. There's a lot of distrust, there's a lot of paranoia, whatever the reason is. And so I, it's so vital to do that, and I think it's well worth the money, frankly, at any cost, with limits, of course. But the, I, I just think like, we don't want to stop that relationship building, because it could spiral out of control. And, and so I think it's a valuable source.
I would support putting in place some sort of agreement that helps to push these things forward. But I am not interested in this area and many others. I think I made clear of relying on what are our neighbors going to do? I think this is an area where Moline should be leading. And while we should be leading in a way that also takes care of getting the numbers we need and get what we need, but I don't think that what the other cities are doing is working. And so I don't think we should follow them down that same path.
They did not follow us last year. We took the lead, if you'll recall, and we really went above and beyond, and the others did not all follow us, just so you know.
But I still think it's important that we continue to lead and benefit.
No disagreement.
Mr. McNeil?
And I'd just add to that, I think there are variables in there, because I, I know that street outreach and Christian care handles a lot of that in Rock Island. So if, if they don't have a contract with Rock Island, that X amount.
And that is what that meeting we had with Ashley and her street outreach folks clarified, who's doing what, right? Humility really is the only one doing that over here on this side of the river, for Moline. Other people are dedicated other places. Anything further on this one? You got, it's at twenty for now. We're going to, we, most of you all want to, want to raise it up to the requested amount, but we need some data and we need a final determination there. I, I just urge us to look at the final numbers that are impacting the levy when we're pulling all of these wonderful things together, because we still haven't heard our infrastructure costs, et cetera, et cetera, right?
I'd actually put it to a poll, because I don't believe that's the will of the council.
Which, to go all the way?
I believe that is the will of the council.
Yeah, that's why I just recorrected myself.
Okay.
Did you all hear me correct myself? That you, it sounds like they all want to fund it at the full amount. I said that after I said, keep it the same. Okay, I can poll the council. Thumbs up for the twenty thousand recommended. All right, thumbs up for the request forty-one, sorry, forty-one eighty-eight. All right, now you have it.
We, we will place that in the packet for October. Okay. Next is the Moline Historical Preservation Commission. They are requesting thirty-five thousand in twenty-five, and then fifteen and six thousand in twenty-seven.
I'm shaking my head. I just, I think these are special, one-time projects that could come out of council contingency or some other budget. I don't want to expand our budget for another commission. I think a surveying project and professional development, that's my personal opinion. I'd rather use that thirty-five on the Humility Homes request. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, Chris, if you know this, is we're thinking about the, the survey specifically, and, and it talked about a certification that we have, that we have to maintain with a survey. What's the timing on that and the benefit of that? Or is that something we'll need to revisit later, too?
One of the, one of the things we're trying to get ready for is when some of the funding's going to be, there's a grant by the state of Illinois that we're trying to prep for right now as for an RFP to go out for. But I think there's some matching dollars that are part of that. So, you know, perhaps we could, at the time the grant is announced, perhaps we could work with administration and try and see if there's some contingent funds for that. Like I said, the other one was the David B. Sears recognition that they were working on, too, which is more a special project, as the mayor said.
It's a one-time, it's a one-time project on the waterfront.
Mr. Timian?
I, I asked Carol the other day, our contingency fund balance, and of the four hundred thousand for the year, we've spent maybe eighteen. And so we're not using the contingency, I think, for its appropriate use. Therefore, I think that there will be money, hopefully, for project, one-time projects like this. I think it's a good idea.
That, I would like to, could you just please update the whole council on the conversation had over email regarding emergency rental assistance and the recommendation from our staff and administration for the council contingency? Because, you know, that three hundred and eighty will decrease quickly, but I mean, we're also talking about funds to do special projects from another year's contingency. So I think it'll all be okay, but yeah.
We, CED received ARPA money for rental, emergency rental assistance. There's a great need out there where we've spent all that money. It was either fifty or sixty thousand dollars.
I think it was sixteen.
And we're down to two hundred dol, two hundred left in the account now. So not a good situation for us, because we are having to turn people away right now. We've made the request that, you know, if there is more ARPA money that can come to us, we feel we can, we can use that money. And it's, it's money that's used in addition to what you're doing with Level Up. This is more, we can deal with people kind of right away, same day, sometimes with some of this money. And there's, there's just a great need out there, as you heard from the Level Up presentation.
All right, but the contingency money was identified as a source, if you couldn't use ARPA, and there's three hundred and eighty thousand there. So I think that, I, I just point that out as why we should not ignore that we have a contingency for situations like this.
Thank you, Mayor.
So further thoughts, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I just, still trying to understand this survey, because there are several things that are said in there. And I get that it's a matching grant against that survey. But it says we're a certified local government, and that the Historic Preservation Commission conducting a survey is part of the agreement that is required to maintain that status. But I don't, what I don't have an understanding of is what that all means.
Right. And I, I'm still learning, when it comes to the certified local government stuff, I'm still learning in that regard, too. But I know, for example, we've been talking about this demolition delay ordinance, right, and things. And, and part of, part of what we're trying to stress to the, the commission is, let's go out there and find out where these buildings are, as opposed to waiting to delay permits and things. Let's, let's go out and try.
Oh, yeah, that was a recommendation.
Right, so...
This kind of helps that problem along.
So doing the survey ahead of time helps you find out where, what are those buildings, what are those historic buildings out there that you want to save? And certain, you know, certain cities have more historic districts than just their downtown, for example, right? Which could lead to other grant funding for some of those areas, revitalization, preserving those buildings. So I think it's a worthwhile cause. I think the contingency fund could be a good way for us to, to fund probably two of those, of those projects. That's what I'll, that's where I'll leave that.
What is the interest of the council? Basically, it's a decision between giving you guidance on including a new commission, a new budget item for a commission, or going to council contingency? Is that what, how I described that, right?
That's pretty much it, because that's where we've been going.
So who would be in favor at this moment of the, including it in the budget items? Clarifying question?
Well, I guess, I have a lot of skepticism about the training piece, though I would be open if we look at that across where we are in our other commissions and the importance of that. I, I feel like I don't have enough information to make a decision in a lot of these cases. And it's why, and that makes, got to say then, no. But I want to open that to, to learning that piece. I still, I think following the path you suggested of, when it comes up, we'll find that money either in contingency or whatever, for the survey, I think that's fine. But at the same time, if we want to talk about building the historical plaque, keys, I'm going to be more interested in, in keeping around. But I don't know how these things are tied together. It's feeling a little too in the dark to make strong recommendations.
And you've, and you've had a lot of requests today that are, let's just be honest, they are more pressing needs, to be honest with you, than some of these.
I think so, you know, we've got some questioning of it, maybe because there's, we're not voting on it at the moment, you have to keep it in there. But know that the majority of the initial reactions is, we need to go to some other source for that particular ask.
So to be determined.
To be determined, right.
You've given them, you know, you've given them the path forward, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Riada, so we're going to leave it in there for now, just as is.
But you know where we may be headed.
Yeah, we do.
Riada is no change, right?
Yeah, there's no change. We currently gave them seventeen thousand four hundred. We have not heard otherwise, whether or not that ask is up or down.
And I'm on that, I, I serve on that, too, and I don't believe, because we already...
That was the increase from prior years.
Oh, good, okay.
Exactly.
All right.
But just to reiterate, they weren't here to speak about it. But know that part of why we did so well with our DCIP grant is because of all the resources through Riada, so.
And the next one is the Neighborhood Partnership Committee. This has been kind of a little bit of a placeholder of four thousand dollars. It's money that is available for any of your board meetings. Yep, we typically have spent much less than the four thousand, or to the tune of about two thousand, but it's there if, if you need supplies, office supplies, or if you need coffee and, and cookies or something when you're meeting with your board people.
Is there any reason we can't consider going down to two thousand, which is just, I mean, again, I'm thinking about the end result of the levy. Like, I don't want to just pad our budget, you know? But personally, you guys, council.
This is really the community engagement money, is the best way to describe it, correct?
Yes, yes.
We have our board meetings, other meetings.
Yes, i- any outside meetings.
Yes, Mr. Timian?
Is this also covering the neighborhood meetings that we have monthly for the neighborhood groups?
This is simply, so when they have their board meetings, if they have a community event, and they want one by the evening floor, they just submit back their receipts to the legal department to review. This is a cure that we have, that we offer every neighborhood. Or like CPG is limited to local, local neighborhoods. So this is a cure that's available to any of the fourteen neighborhoods that we have.
Okay, that's helpful information. I guess I sound like a curmudgeon, just because I just want us to be really smart when we really want to be careful. And if we're not using four thousand, then every thousand adds up somewhere to the things we really want to put the money toward, or really need to put the money toward. That's why I just think maybe there's a little bit to play with there, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think in, rather than naming a number, perhaps a better way to say, if we look back at what it's been over the last few years, we should budget a little more than that, right? If we spent around two thousand, we budget twenty-five hundred. I mean, unless we have a reason to expect that there's going to be an increase, I'm open to that, too, if we say like, well, we already know there's one more meeting next week, or one more group that's getting active, well, we can plan for that. But I think if we just think through what we think the real number will be and pick there and just save a little bit.
The last three years, I think the high was just...
Two grand.
Yep, so if you want to make it be twenty-five hundred a year, and then we can readjust, I mean, if we all of a sudden have a lot of meetings, we can certainly come back and amend the budget for a thousand dollars. So we're in for twenty-five hundred, does that sound reasonable? Thumbs up?
I don't know, I was thinking about twenty-five hundred, but how did James came to...
Yeah. All right. Junior achievement?
And the last one, this is just a current, current contract that we are under. It's just to show that those dollars are committed. So then jumping down to the Public Arts Fund, we talked about that earlier. It's a matter of destruction from council. What number do you want to try to put in the budget? We're going to, we can revisit this in October, but just to try to balance the budget, because if it's an additional hundred grand, I've got to try to find that hundred thousand.
Council? Mr. Macias?
Well, I, I do like the idea of grants. So when Dave Harrell spoke, there could be some work there, whatever opportunities we have, they're out there, let's explore the heck out of it. I love grants.
We can do it, teacher.
I love, I love grants.
My, my preference is seventy-five for our commitment. We encouraged Dawn and Dave to help with grants. I think we can exceed one seventy-five with the correct grants.
Others, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, my, I agree generally. I think the one piece there is if they, if there is a, a smaller ask, or what that looks like, where they say, well, we really need eighty-five, or we, we need to do this, or we're going to be able to take a step into the grant writing process with some investment of that. I'm open to hearing them make kind of a counter argument, I guess, is where it's at of, as we get to that, but I think seventy-five now makes the most sense.
Thumbs up? Seventy-five K. All right. Thank you.
And the last one on our sheet is Project Now. As you heard in the presentation, they were looking for additional funding. If we could, Lori, if you could turn to page, let's see, twenty-six and twenty-seven, just to maybe help you make a little bit of a decision, as we're looking at this.
Can't see it.
Can you make it bigger, David? No.
That's the problem.
Okay, that's fine. I should have my computer in front of me. We're fine.
Sorry, and how about if you go to the next one first?
What page is that, twenty-seven?
Twenty-six and twenty-seven. Yep, I'm actually going to start on page twenty-seven. As you know, our cannabis tax is going to be coming in effective July one. There is a seventy-five day lag until we actually receive our money. So the first payment we will get on a monthly basis will be in October. However, talked with Bob and our staff, and what we decided to do is we looked to Rock Island County, who gets the same percentage as what the city of Moline gets. So we took the total county, and they get Mylan as well, they get the entire county receipts. So we, we took Rock Island County's receipts, that you can see up here, we subtracted out Mylan, and we project with both of our dispensaries here, that we should be averaging about forty-five thousand dollars a month. We've got December, January, February, and March receipts. Again, there's a lag. But based on that, we can project that it looks like cannabis for Moline from July one through December will be to the tune of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then for next year, a tentative budget of five hundred and forty thousand. So it's roughly in the ballpark that we had talked about a year ago.
Where we predicted it.
Yes. And so now, Lori, if we go back one page, please, we can look here, right now, the commitments that we had currently had in twenty-four, is everybody on the same page? We had budgeted in our special CIP plan that we're going to talk about later tonight, an annual contribution of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars out of cannabis, and our Level Up program of two hundred thousand potentially a year. I mean, we just put it in a placeholder for the two hundred. And we still have, undesignated in the yellow, of nineteen thousand in twenty-five, and then two hundred and forty-one and two hundred and forty-one thousand again, in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if that funding comes in, we've got money. The other, other thing I want to make mention, Lori, if you can go back one more page. As you know, our cannabis money did not come to fruition this year. And we had already committed back in twenty-three that we were going to be funding the Mo Live, and we had our transfer to Special Capital Projects. So we cash flowed from the general fund in order to pay for that. So in this plan, I was... So in this plan, I was quickly paying back the general fund. You'll see that two hundred and twenty thousand transfer in from the general fund in twenty-four, and then it's going to pay back the general fund the very following year. If we were to spread that out, not pay back the general fund so quickly, maybe do it over three years or four years, that would give more money in that yellow, if you go back to that, yep, on that yellow contingency line. That would give you additional funding, um, again, just for a longer payback for the general fund, just something to consider. So the question right now is, is what level would you like me to try to balance the budget for the level up program? Hold it the same at two hundred? Do you need more time to think about, um, at what level you'd like it to be? But it appears we do have fun, we do have some money available.
Mr. Timmy.
Um, I, personally, I prefer we just do the Mo Live transferred one go, um, not burden future budgets with this. My preference for, uh, Project Now, and I love this program and Level Up, is that we keep it at twenty-five families, but increase for the internship and the finance and admin staff, taking us to two hundred and sixteen thousand. And then we can explore expansion after we've had a successful year, and we understand learnings and everything. Before we plan on growing, we can kind of stabilize, personally.
Okay, so that's one idea. Other thoughts from the council? Ms. Castro.
Um, I agree with Alder Person, Timmy, except I would also include an increase in the emergency funding. I think that, just, I work in an organization that helps, um, people pay for, um, bills like that, and we have so many requests that we cannot pay. I think that any additional funding that we can give for that part would be, um, would be really, really good. I'm fine with keeping it at the twenty-five families, but would like to see an increase in the emergency funding.
I'm going to put out there what I shared with, um, staff related to the emergency funding that Chris Mathias mentioned. Totally want to help with that, so we don't have to turn people away. If we have that money sitting somewhere, we should be using it, putting it to good use. But I have always felt, and that's partly why I wanted the level up program in the first place, especially the, the Level A, is that putting a Band-Aid on a situation versus actually changing the situation feels like a never-ending sequence, a, a, a cycle of events. And I want to make sure, if we can, that we are putting the right amount toward emergencies, but we are really focused on all our strategies through CED. What's our job creation, right? Well, good-paying jobs. What are we doing on housing, right? All the things that help build sustainable solutions. And so that's where I don't know what the right answer is for the amount of emergency funding when we do have emergency funding through CED at the moment, right, and, um, et cetera. I, I, that's why I do, I do understand the request for thirty-five families. But to your point of, let's be careful about that before committing too far, I can understand gradually getting up there at some point. Ms. Murphy.
I think we need to keep in consideration one of our major employers, just laid up a bunch of people. And in six months, the money's going to start running thin. The ones that are not going to find a job, we're in an election year. Sometimes, you know, employment numbers lag, so emergency funding probably is going to be done.
Okay.
And I think the ones that have homes, we can help them, maintain until they can find. So I would say level, I would want to see the funding at the requested, based on what just happened.
Okay, at the requested. Anybody else for us to speak on that? Ms. Finch.
I agree with, uh, Ms. Murphy.
Okay, Mr. Macias?
Yeah, me too, because there is, just like the, the testimonial, the lady told us, there are folks who, yeah, they might get the Band-Aid, but, uh, it just won't help them. And, and, and maybe if during this process, they can explore, like you mentioned, other cities do a longer term. A lot of times, folks who are in poverty, uh, it takes them about three years, and this is like federal dole, dole programs to get out of it. They don't want to be in it, but it does take, and you're always going to have some folks that are just in that cycle that might never be able to get out, and that's part of it. But the majority tend to get out of it in about three years, and this is a stat that I heard back in college. So, but tha- that's actually, actually a pretty good investment, uh, where you can get people, that's where that level, the A part is really helpful to get them positioned to a place where they can get out of poverty. So I, I see the value in, in that part too. But yeah, I, I, I am apprehensive because it's a big jump from year one to year two in the dollar amounts. But, uh, I also believe the cannabis tax should be pumped back into the people in our community, and this is probably the best way to, to go about it, especially since they, the Project Now can leverage other funds for other, um, expenses that they may have, so.
So I'm, I'm hearing fund at the level required, but, or level requested, majority, unless you have something different to say. But we have to be in a little more communication with Project Now about what it actually looks like, because, right? If it's the thirty-five, I'm not prepared to make that decision tonight, and we would have to have an agreement written up and all of that anyway. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
If we're looking to expand one over the other, I believe I would be inclined to doing the investment program as opposed to the emergency funding. One other question that I think can help in, inform that and may change or adjust my position too, um, I think having a little better understanding of the different emergency funds that we are funding, and understanding like which levers we might go to, and, and I know Chris spoke a little bit about that as far, you know, the ones we're running out of CED versus those are going through Project Now. I think they're, they're serving slightly different areas. I don't mean to put anyone on the spot tonight, but I think that is, I'd love to see just, um, because understanding those differences, so to know which levers we're trying to hit the most, I guess.
I think we can bring back a report to the full council that will explain the difference between what's going on with Project Now, what's going on with the program that KJ administers, you know, and some of these other programs around here, so that you have a better picture of where your dollars are going and how they're being leveraged. Because they are all serving kind of the same purpose through different agencies, and, and that's the difficulty. And there's still not enough money, even with all the agencies doing it. That's, that is the issue, so, you know, you still have the contingency, as, as we said. So, I mean, we had recommended perhaps using that to pump some money during this time of year as we're heading toward, toward the winter to assist in the CED department's emergency shelter program, sheltering program, because there's tremendous demand there. That's where they're seeing the greatest demand for their services right now. So that's the reason why I suggested that, because we're out of ARPA dollars, we're just out. It's committed.
Mr. Timmy.
So if we're going with two sixty-four, then the money doesn't, isn't there for twenty-twenty-five? We either need to pull it from the, uh, special capital projects, or take Mo Live over three years, and I think that should be a discussion. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable taking it from, you know, the delta from the capital investment. Uh, if, if the purpose of cannabis money is to help the community, I think it's a reasonable place to do it. CIP is a part of helping the community, but we're talking now about a difference of about forty thousand dollars, eh, fifty. So I, that's my personal preference, as, as opposed to stretching out the Mo Live payback. I don't know if there's any other thoughts.
Is there anybody who strongly disagrees with that? Yeah, Mr. Schmidt, question?
When we pay back the money to the general fund, that essentially is, um, how is that impacting our budget now? Is that, that's decreasing our available reserves, or it's considered part of our reserves?
It's just cash flow, yeah. It didn't run through revenues and expenditures. It's just a due to and from. It's a governmental accounting journal entry.
Right.
It's an internal loan.
It's an internal loan, and so, I mean, if we were to spread it even over a year and a half, it would, it would allow that to be fully funded.
Right now, that money essentially shows up as part of our general fund reserve?
It's in our, it, it, our cash balances have been reduced. In our financials, it's showing, it's like an accounts receivable. It's in, it's a due from the cannabis fund, and it'll remain there until it's paid back.
Correct. You should have been audited that way.
Yes, and so it's in the audit, and so even if it takes us, we want to spread it out another year, then it wouldn't jeopardize our special capital projects fund.
I think that, that, that is a valid point. I, I, I hear what you're saying about, let's just be done and pay it back. But again, we have been really smart, in my opinion, about a stepwise approach to building the fund so we can build the things in Moline, and we probably should just stick to that steady approach, even if it takes a little time. Because pulling back on special CIP then puts the, puts, right, you always talk about the consequence of, of doing that. It puts funding the, the fire station and some of the other big things we are on our way to doing, it puts that in jeopardy. So I, I guess I'm inclined to take the staff's recommendation on this one.
And we do have, and I totally appreciate your position, but we do have, we're in a very fortunate position that we have good cash reserves. So to float it another, you know, year or six months even, and it, cannabis may come in higher and it won't even be an issue.
There we go. So it sounds like, at this moment, keep it at, put it in at two sixty-seven, whatever was requested, and you'll come up with the strategy for how that's getting paid.
We will show you on in October, so I'm going to circle. I'll try to fit all three years in, and then you guys can change that, understood, on October. So for payments to agencies, we have direction, and I will use these numbers in to try to balance the general fund, because it does have an impact. So the very next item, we're going to kind of fly through some of these, is our rental housing. It's on page twenty-eight. Again, earlier in the summer, um, you had a presentation on the rental housing, and we right now are asking councils, uh, consideration to fund that annual transfer from the general fund to support this program going forward. So it's the yellow highlight there, it's a transfer in from the general fund. This is an additional item to the budget, um, because we did not have as many licenses as what we had anticipated. But this will support it and will make it whole going forward. I might just say, just for future reference, when we review the program after you and I talk this afternoon, Chris, currently, it's highlighted there in green, I've got the number here, total projected number of exempt properties are one thousand oh forty-seven. If we were to license even a portion of those, say we don't exempt, but it would give us that revenue stream to fill, to fill that hole. And it's just a dollar and a cent on accounting mind trying to reconcile, but it's just something to think about in the future. But right now, tonight, we're just kind of looking, and again, it impacts the budget that we're trying to present to you in October, because this has an impact on the general fund of about eighty-one thousand dollars in twenty-five, or seventy-eight thousand in twenty-five.
Mr. Schmidt.
I understand what you're saying. Wouldn't, another way to do that would be to rebalance the program without having such a burden of the outside staffing? Is that perhaps more of a Chris question?
Right, I mean, what?
The staff, I was just going to say, the staff though, it's one way or the other. When we, when we hired the administrative assistant and we hired the inspectors, it was additional staff, and it was going to be paid through fees. If we reallocate that, it's either going to be paid directly out of the general fund, or we're going to transfer it into this program where it's potentially doing ours.
I guess I'm not talking about those three. I'm talking about the other positions that are being partially funded through this. The Neighborhood Improvement Officer was added, I mean, positions we already had that we sort of, because essentially if we start paying into the general fund to pay back a thing that used to be paid by the general fund, why, why wouldn't we just rebalance that? When we thought it was going to be a larger revenue and we captured more positions, that made sense. But I think just resetting that, recalibrating that to try and make it self-sustaining for just those three positions potentially.
I would concur with Alden and Schmidt, it needs to be rebalanced.
There we go.
It does, it needs to be rebalanced.
Did I break something, Carol?
I just want you to know, I just want you to know that when we put together the program, we balanced last, we balanced the current year budget with those payroll allocations into the program. So, I mean, we're going to rebalance it back, but we, absolutely, we can do that. We need to, what we're currently doing is trying to capture how many hours of staff time do we really spend?
That's right.
And so that's, we're still in that process of doing that, but we will recalibrate those, those percentages if that's council's desire.
Yep, all right.
Okay, so we will, we will see how close we come, but otherwise we'll, we'll balance it with the general fund combination thereof. Okay, land bank, it's kind of the same thing on page, let's see, Lori, oops, I skipped ahead. Okay, um, land bank, go to page thirty-two. Again, we're just looking, um, as you know, ARPA is running out, and we have allocated ARPA funds to fund the land bank through the end of twenty-twenty-five for that forty-two thousand. So as a placeholder, again, this is in the twenty-six and twenty-seven budget, so it's just, it's in those outer years. We just want to know if council, um, is in sync with funding eighty-five thousand and one hundred and thirty-seven thousand in those two outer years to support the program with the budget that I bring back to you. It's a chunk of money, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it's a question of, are we getting a return on investment for what we were expecting? And I, I don't know if the council heard that in previous presentations or not. Yes, Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, I, I'm just going to throw this out there, because, I mean, the, the land bank serves, serves a very specific function if used correctly. And when this program was launched initially, prior to my tenure here, we were still, it was already well into discussions, and there were consultants, as you'll recall, working for the city, and they delivered the results, and we entered into the agreements. It's now grown to include Silvis, um, and others are probably using it more effectively, I think, than we are at this point. And I think that's in large part because we had a history internally between MCDC, between CED, between LEAK, of actually doing the work that the land bank is supposed to be doing for us. So there's an overlap. There's an overlap that's never been addressed, and it's never been reassessed and reevaluated. And I think that's where we're at, and I don't want to condemn the work that Mary's doing, because I think she does great work. I think it's really more of an in-house thing that we need to resolve in terms of who's going to be doing what, and what are we going to assign to the land bank, including properties that come into the city that in some respects maybe should go to the land bank, but they don't. We hang on to them, and then we do with them what we want. So there's, there's, it's a mixed bag of nuts right now, and I, I want to actually just have the time to sort those and continue funding this, you know, another year and get this sorted out, because, you know, it's a topic that comes up all the time, and there was a lot of pushback and resistance to create it internally, and that, that resistance kind of, I think, is still there. I think we don't take advantage of the land bank as it was intended. So it's my observation.
Mr. Macias?
I have a question. How come Rock Island, it says, it doesn't have a dollar amount for twenty-twenty-four?
They paid it all.
They, they paid three years.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they paid, yeah, in advance. They took their ARPA money and.
Well, so we have agreements then with the other cities that we have to keep, we agreed to have the employee here, right?
I would think so.
We have this going, yeah.
It's an intergovernmental agreement with financial obligations on the part of all the parties. Correct, okay.
So the answer for Carol is keep it for now, per Mr. Vitas' suggestion? Because we're still in the initial period. It's the outer years we're not sure about.
Yes, yes.
How long is the agreement? That's, I'm not clear with that.
Yeah, it's like, I think it's a three.
Yeah, how long is the agreement that we made?
Yeah, I think it ends in, end of twenty-five. Isn't that correct?
When the agreement ends.
The intergovernmental agreement?
Yeah.
In three, it's a three-year agreement.
It's a three-year agreement, so we're coming into that third year, so.
Yeah, end of twenty-five.
Time for the come.
So there, there is the time to figure it out, for your purposes, keeping what we have projected is.
So just keep that for now, and then when we revisit it, when we get to the next year's budget, okay. So just keep that for now and then when we visit it, when we get to the next year's budget, okay. Okay, the next one is special, our special events. And we are just looking for council's consideration to fund the special events at sixty thousand annually. In the past, we had a combination of our tourism fund last year paid about ten thousand dollars. And, or I'm sorry, tourism paid eighty eight thousand dollars. We had in excess of sixty thousand last year. Now it's going to be a flip that the general fund is going to be supporting a hundred percent of the annual funding, sixty thousand. So it's, it's roughly a fifty thousand dollar increase from twenty twenty four, support from the general fund. And this is the list of projects, Lori, if you go to the next one. Excuse me, what page are we on? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Number thirty nine, if you go to thirty nine, that's kind of a list of all the programs that the committee put together with MACI. And so twenty three was a big year because we had the big MO live. But I think sixty thousand, MACI and the committee has felt like that's a good number. And I just need direction if we want to try to balance it with general fund monies, we'll present it that way in October.
I see, yes, from folks on the council, general fund.
Okay, alright, great.
Thank you.
So now we are into the enterprise funds, the fee review. And I'm going to kind of start this off. Back in twenty twenty two, back in, you know, two thousand and twenty one and twenty two, the city underwent an extensive rate study to identify proper fee structures in all four of our enterprise funds to help cover future operating costs and capital needs. Following that review, the council agreed to review fees annually. And over the last couple of years, we've come back in September. But we, the council had agreed to review fees annually and to consider small incremental increases if needed to keep pace with wage increases, inflationary costs, operating increases, and then the costs of any capital needs. So the recommended fee increases that you're going to hear about tonight in the PowerPoint, it follows the plan that you have seen over the last couple of years. It's the exact same percentage increases that you saw last year. We simply added one additional year on for twenty seven. And as you'll see, when we go through the financials at the very end of this, we're thrilled to say that the plan is working. All of our four enterprise funds are now on level ground. Their fund balances are good and we're going to review that. But just a real quick recap, when we started this, W P C, our sewer plan had not raised fees for five years, stormwater for seventeen years, water for ten years, and sanitation for four. And now we're on level ground and we're going to start seeing that we're coming down to a marginal increase by the third year. We're getting in that two percent range. So it's, it's much more affordable if we can just stay pace. And so with that, I'll let Charlie start.
So we'll start with the water pollution control fund. So basically, the water pollution control, you can think about it as three major sections. We have our north slope, our south slope, and then the pipes to get in there, our sewers. So on the south slope, we have a big improvement project that's in the design phase right now. We're actually just got the sixty percent done. And this was driven partially by the south slope treatment plant that we have there right now is older and some of the technology is out of date. And it's also driven by new discharge limits that that plant right now cannot meet. And so if we design the plant ourselves, which we decided to do and fund it and build it, then we can control how we want to hit those permit numbers instead of the I E P A coming in and telling us that we have to do it. The projects that include an S R F that we've been allocated for seventy three point five million for next year. That'll probably be at least seventy three point five million. We'll see how the construction cost inflation goes. This design is continuing. Hopefully, we'll have it, or we have to have it under construction next summer in order to hit the funding. On the north slope, we have the phosphorous removal, which again, this is coming in another permit. Even though the north slope is relatively new and they built that, they didn't see these phosphorus limits coming. So we have to put in a chemical phosphorous removal system there. Again, to hit, to hit the permits, it's not something, we don't mind doing it. It's good for the environment and everything, but it is being told, you have to hit it. And then our collection system, we're maintaining that and doing smoke testing, which basically just keeps the rainwater from getting into the sewer pipes that we're treating sewage and not rainwater. The next, as you can see, the list of the capital improvement projects, you've seen these and gone over them before. This is just to remind you what we have going for the wastewater treatment plant. We see we have the design and then we'll start construction. And you'll see those big, big twenty four million dollars will be coming from loans that then we will then be paying back. I think you've all have seen this form and gone over it in detail.
At the round table in June.
So with our sewer fund revenue, we have a wholesale customers and that's East Moline and Coal Valley. We treat those out at the south slope or the River Regional Plant. We have residential and commercial and municipal. They're all classified the same. Unless you are under one of these special categories, we have these special categories. You pay a little bit more if you're a laundromat going all the way to the creamery, which would be Whitey's. And we charge a little bit more because these industries do put more of a demand on the wastewater treatment plant. And they take more energy and wear and tear on the treatment to clean the water. So we had a nine percent increase for twenty twenty four. This was agreed to, as Carol said, as part of the plan. We're asking for another nine percent increase in twenty twenty five. And then going after that, it will be more four percent increases into the future. So these will be applied both to the commodity and to the fixed rates, hitting, hitting what's considered kind of the standard of thirty percent in the fixed rate. The next slide will show you roughly the increases that we have over the next few years, nine, four and four, and the base charge. And then as we talked about a little bit earlier, our outside customers are charged a little bit more. And then you'll see how much it increases for each different rate from going from a laundry to a, to a creamery.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Dykesen.
To what extent, the sewer rates were based on projections of the cost of the plant a couple of years ago. So we're going into the final design of the plant, so to what extent are the rates set to it? So are there any significant increases in what actually they're happening?
So if you, a couple of slides, you'll see why we have to do all this. Because right now, being told by our engineers, we still are on the seventy three nap. They have planted in our ear, hey, maybe, you have to be careful, just maybe it might go up based on other projects that they've seen coming back that are surprising. So there's nothing to take action now and worry about, but it might just be them hedging their bets. So as we do this though, it kind of helps us because as I said, we're in the design phase right now. As we're doing our designs with our engineers strand, the back of our minds, we're kind of tallying, this could be cut if needed. We could scale back here, we could scale back there. So the good news is they've got us a little worried about that. But also it's given us a chance to, okay, maybe we don't need that, but we absolutely do need this, right? So, so to answer your question, these rates are for what we have this up before.
Mr. Tamin.
With the nine percent increase of retail and wholesale, how does that compare to neighboring areas? Obviously not served by our plants. I'm just looking to make sure we're not disincentivizing doing business here with the increased rates if they're out of whack regionally.
I believe the information you're looking for is on the next slide.
Forty six.
Oh, there you go.
So this is what Mr. Tamin was asking about. So you can see, this gives our projected rates for twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. So the first set of rows is the commodity, the next set is the fixed rate. But in reality, all the residents really care about is the final bill and that's the last set of rows. And so you can see, we are below Davenport in Rock Island and a little bit ahead of East Moline. And we basically stay that way through our nine, four and four.
To be clear, sewer usage is based on water usage.
That's correct.
So if there's a resident, the answer is use less water, both bills go down.
That's, that's correct. We charge roughly water in.
And just to your point, I saw, A, a draft of an environmental sustainability plan that the one committee is working on and then the minutes, basically, the updates to it. I believe there was something in there about educating our residents about water, smart water usage.
Water conservation.
Water conservation, et cetera, right? Am I correct, Mr. Schmidt? So what I'm saying is, it's not, it's something that is not just sitting out there, but like we can act, actually be actively engaged in helping everybody manage that.
From that same point, the water conservation would help on their bills. You might hear about other places that are really in the water conservation, like the Southwest, where they're actually worried about their water supply. We're actually very water rich here with the Mississippi. But the conservation would help with their, with their bills.
Thank you.
So.
Oh, we have a question, Mr. Schmidt.
When the, when the actual costs come back on the plant higher, because I think that's a when, not a.
When.
Jinx.
Jinx. Well, I got it. If they come back, they're still not the ones. What are we looking at as far as funding sources that are the most likely opportunities there? And are we restricted because of those loans we're getting? Or would kind of the full set of tools, we could go pick which ones we're going to go after?
The way I understand it is we'll, so what we've been advised is it's not going to be crazy. They told us maybe eighty or eighty five and go with S R F. And so above our loan, it's not like we're going to be asking for tens of millions of dollars of what's been allocated. We are asking for more, but they do think we should be able to get through S R F.
So in that, but if we had to come back and say either we're borrowing from the general funds or we're increasing rates, obviously is another piece of that central puzzle. Like we're not limited because we're taking those other loans of how we pay for the last piece?
Yeah, that's, that's one part of bigger picture where we'd have to say, would that be worth it? Or should we cut down a little bit on the, on the treatment plant? So I also don't want to lead everybody and say it's going to be there. You guys will have the final say of, I mean, if they say build a treatment plant for one million dollars, I'll say it won't look pretty, but we'll do our best. Right, so ultimately, we will.
That's right. No face brick. Value engineer the project.
That's right. So I didn't mean to scare you guys like that. It's a little bit over, but I'm probably under eighty five or eighty, I think they said. Yep. Any other questions?
Let's continue.
Yeah, let's have a group chat. Good. So the reason, one of the, one of the, okay. One of the reasons we need to do this is because in order to get that S R F, you have to show that you have the ability to pay it back and it has to be codified. So that's why we're coming in, asking for this. This shores up our finances and shows them we're good for it and it's.
So you'll be, if this body agrees to what you have here as the rates, it will actually be codified, not just sit in our budget projections? Is that what you're saying?
That's why we want to bring the ordinance back next week.
Yes, that's what I've, that's correct. Mr. Schmidt?
Go ahead.
The other reason we'd want to bring the ordinance next week is because we need to give our, Coal Valley and East Moline ninety days to know that their rates will go up too. Because they, what, in the agreement, we raise our rates, they automatically get their rates from the prison. So we need to give them ample time to.
For the January one billing cycle.
That's correct.
Mr. Schmidt?
Because I've ridden this horse before. The, when we're looking at, we'll be codifying rates for a single year.
Yes.
And then the budget will build in what our presumed rates are going, but we're codifying them one year at a time.
Just the one year, January one.
But they have to be codified to show that we can pay them.
Yeah, okay.
So this is a history. I believe Carol spoke about this. We had five years of no wastewater rate increases. Then we had last year nine percent, this year nine percent, and then going forward would be four percent. So if you look what they did previously, eighteen percent over, that would be what, seven years? Breaks down to, I think, what we could be going forward. I believe last year you guys asked for more manageable, smaller bites after kind of making some tough decisions. So that, right now, our finances show we should be able to manage that.
Great.
And at the bottom, we show the increased revenues of each percentage increase, nine hundred thousand and then about four hundred and fifty the next two years.
That's correct.
Moving on to stormwater, the stormwater is created in two thousand and two. Basically, for a couple of decades, it was really in the, piggybacked off of the roads funds. It wasn't financed up to its potential. So this increase in the stormwater rates that you, was passed the last couple of years, what that did is allow the stormwater division to really stand on its own and not just be, and not just be pigging back on what the roads are doing, but really be more proactive in the projects that they're, that they're able to undertake. So we're asking for a monthly increase, I guess, an increase in general of two percent. That's for twenty six and twenty seven. So what that do is have the residential small, three thirty six, and medium, six forty six and thirteen dollars and twenty six cents. And then once you get up to commercial, it's actually based on the measurement of it. So to give you an idea, sixty seven percent of all households fall into this residential small.
Do you want, you know the square footage that differentiates small, the medium to large?
Uh, not off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I can get that information back to you.
I'm curious.
Want to, don't you want to know?
Lots of, sorry. So it's like, yeah.
Alright, please continue, Charlie.
And then again, we go, the next slide is the capital improvement that you have seen before. And so what you'll notice is a lot of projects that are, we're able to take and be proactive about. So we developed a stormwater master plan that was approved by council in twenty twenty three. This helped get our prioritization going. And basically, what the stormwater master plan does is two things, right? So if you're not much of an environmentalist, you can say your stormwater fee goes towards protecting your property and keeping it from being flooded out. We have a lot of ravines, right? It protects property. If you are caring about the earth, then we say it does do the environmental side too because Moline does have an N P D S for stormwater that we have to meet. So it's kind of doing both things. It takes into account protecting property and then it takes into account keeping the river clean so that the water plant doesn't have to work so hard.
These are good examples, by the way, of what we could do if we look at the redesign of the River Drive, main entrance of this city. In terms of all that surface that's out there, reducing some of that, that heat from the concrete and capturing the stormwater.
And so like, you're correct, the name of the game in stormwater is you want it to soak in. So you don't really want to, you're going to have to deal with runoff. But the more green you can get, the more permeable surface, the less runoff you have to deal with. And so we said, in addition to soaking up that, it also kind of cools the area. So these are the projects that we're able to, to. So we're looking at, if you go to the, the next slide. So we're doing a two percent increase in twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. So we're doing a two percent increase in twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. You can see, where I said sixty-seven percent, that's seven cents extra a month, bring their, their bill up to three thirty-six next, um, next year. And you can see how it goes up. So even the large residential, the larger plots goes to thirteen, twenty-six. And then, we'll talk about it in a second, the commercial, where it's actually measured, it brings it up to seventy-one, sixty. So the, the increase, monthly increase, the next two years with the two percent increases, nickel and a couple pennies. So here is how we measure the commercial. And we compare it to how East Moline and Rock Island does theirs. So on the left here, we have the Quad City Christian School, with all their rec area and grass outside. And on the right, we have the building that houses Hobby Lobby and I believe it's PetSmart. So you can look at their different bills. The one on the left, they have the impervious area, is outlined in red, so you can see they're only being charged, like we said, for the water that does not soak in. You can see their bill there. But if you look at the Hobby Lobby building, they have very little area that can soak up rain, so their bill is much larger, which makes sense, because all that water is gonna run off and then need to be dealt with by the city. And you can see how our bills compare to East Moline and Rock Island. Just know that the way they calculate their stormwater is a little bit different equation for their commercial. You can see the history, it was quite a while with no increase. And so really, what, you guys already made the tough decision of increasing it thirty percent the last couple of years. And by increasing that, what you've come in, did in a, in a roundabout way, is increase what the roads could do, right? Because now they're not having to kind of carry along stormwater, stormwater can stand on its own, which benefits both. So we're asking for a two percent going forward, and that should be enough to fund the projects we're looking for. And then you can see the increase is about forty thousand dollars. Any questions there, someone?
Keep us moving.
So then we get into the water system, the rates haven't changed since two thousand and fourteen, so it was ten years. Part of that delay in increase was because we started selling about four hundred thousand gallons of water a day to Silvis. What we did have is debt retire in two thousand and twenty-four. But because of the age of the plant and the increasing regulations, it's just like having an older home. You gotta constantly be fixing it up. So we had debt that retires, but then we turn around, we do, and we're in the middle of another master plan for the water plant, which will guide us for the next fifteen to twenty years, and then help prioritize what we need to do. So that debt service is just kind of, kind of think about it always, rolling, and it's, it's just the way it is. As part of this water master plan that we'll have, we'll also get a number for the price of building a whole new water plant. But I can tell you right now, that is just for comparisons, to make what they're doing. Building a whole new water treatment plant is unrealistic, right? But it's here, just so you can see, I guess you can make, I guess that's your decision. So we also have the lead service line replacements that begin in two thousand and twenty-five. So you've seen some of this, where we're gonna replace about three hundred a year. Those are part of our schedule as SRF, but there's a new law, the LCRR, that's going in in October. What that states is if we do any repair on a lead service line, we have to pull it out and repair it. So even if it's not in the census tract that's being worked on, even if it's not gonna be paid through the SRF, we still have to repair that. And you guys have, giving maintenance of the whole line to the city. So we have an unexpected leak at a box, we go in there and tell them, we gotta pull it out. So there will be more increased replacement of lead lines on that. But eventually, they've all got to come out. So it's gonna be cheaper next year than in twenty years, yes.
If there's a leak at one house, service line going to one house, the whole neighborhood is on lead, is that the opportunity? Or is that the requirement?
No, just that house.
Okay.
Is, is, is that, yes.
So we could end up going back later and doing the rest of the houses on that.
Yes, so the way, when we're doing the lead service replacement land project, is we are, we are doing whole neighborhoods, because we get more bang for the buck. And the contractor can set up and just go. But if we're doing an emergency repair, we'll do just that.
Okay.
Just that house and provide what goes along with it, this filters and service and testing.
Mr. Schmidt?
How much, I, I, how realistic is it that we'll be able to tie a lot of the lead service line replacements with our road construction as well? Or if, like, for instance, if they ripped up a whole road? Is it too much to stop the road progress to have them come and do that whole street? Like, is that even possible?
What?
Because I hate this, the idea that we would build a new road and then be ripping out the lead service lines underneath it.
What I can tell you is we are working with the engineering department, and Laura Clower has been very good. Where we are trying to, a project that we're submitting to the state for approval, we are trying to line that up as much as we can. But unfortunately, like what we've been allocated for next year, we can only do it in certain census tracts. And so we have to do that area for the forgivable loan going forward. When we get the loans that open up and we can go wherever, we'll, that'll be a much more of a issue we'll have to dive into.
I think he's answered it. There's a tremendous effort.
That makes tons of sense, actually.
We're doing as much as we can, we'll never be able to do it a hundred percent.
And then we have to deal with the other utilities that are not our own too. The gas company ripping up streets that we just worked on, or sidewalks we just installed. You know, it's frustrating, but they've got their calendar too, and deals don't match up sometimes.
We have taken it into account today. Okay. Uh, the next one is the PFAS regulations have been finalized. So we are in talks with an engineering group to try to do some PFAS treatment. What we have roughly planned right now, it will be, it should be roughly paid for, for the settlements from Three M and DuPont and some other ones. But the problem is, those, that settlement money isn't gonna come to us in one big fat check. They kind of keep pushing it back, so we're not, we're not sure how much money, how quickly we can get it. So I don't know if they'll break it into a few years or give us a nickel a week for eternity. So it should roughly pay itself out, but we can't.
Can't help space. It's okay, Charlie.
We can't put off the, that until they, until it comes in one chunk, because it's not gonna happen, but eventually, we should be able to, to go down. And then, eventually, I believe we, you guys talked about this a couple of weeks ago. Once Moline is more developed out and further down the road, then there would be opportunities to sell water. Here is the capital improvement plan that you've seen before. You'll see that it does have lead service line replacements, PFAS treatment, and other, you'll also see where we have some allocations for what the engineers will recommend to keep doing continual improvements in the master plan recommendations. Here's some pictures, an example of what, just some areas, show what condition our water plant is. Even though we're doing great, we're making great quality water, it does take a tremendous effort and a lot of experience and skill by our mechanics. So the lead service line replacements that we're going to start next year, that has been decided that we will pay for us, be paid for by a surcharge, surcharge. So we're hope to borrow three million dollars a year. The first year will be forgiven, based on our census tract income data. We don't hold out much hope that any in the future will be, will be, but it's competitive, so we'll see what other people put in. And then the surcharge ramps up as we borrow more money, and then as we pay off that money, it goes downhill in the future, and the surcharges go back down. The next one is, you can see the history, we're ten years without an increase, and then seven percent in two thousand and twenty-five, and then about two percent going forward to hold that. Part of this increase is, even though the three million dollars from the lead service line replacement is forgivable, we have to treat it as a loan. So we have to show that we could pay it back, even though it will be forgiven. So this just shores that up and shows that we can do that. Here's our comparison to the other towns. Again, our commodity are fixed, where it really matters is at the bottom. You can see that we're below Davenport, East Moline, and Rock Island, going all the way out to two thousand and twenty-seven. That's all I got. Any questions?
No, keep going, we're at nine-thirty. Thank you.
Good evening. Next sanitation fund, as Carol and Charlie had mentioned, I'll echo their, their statement with that. The plan is in place, it was in place before I arrived, so we're gonna continue recommending that plan. The fees collected will go towards wages, equipment, and supplies for the sanitation division. This will allow us to keep services for refuse collection, our recycling contract oversight, brush collection, yard waste, and then bulky waste as well. Going back to twenty-one, twenty-two, this fund did borrow from the general fund, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. That will be paid back this year for five hundred thousand. It does mean, however, for the cash flow analysis, we're still recommending a seven percent increase for next year, the current year, the next year, and then two percent for twenty-six and twenty-seven. So next slide, how does that compare us with the other communities? We are projecting to be very competitive, lower than other communities as well, moving forward. Doesn't necessarily mean services lower, cost-wise, as long as service is still good, so. So, so good with the projections with that. Um, next slide, so this, this just breaks it down a little bit further. The top portion is the refuse individually, and then the bottom would be with the addition of the recycling costs as well. So that's where we get the fifteen dollars and forty-six cents per mon, I'm sorry, fifteen dollars, twenty-three cent per month cost for refuse and recycling. And then going back to the history, again, we are recommending a seven percent increase for two thousand and twenty-five, two percent for two thousand and twenty-six, two percent for two thousand and twenty-seven. Again, this is a modest increase per year, as aside from the sporadic increases in years past, where it's basically a catch-up for, to, to make it whole. Any questions?
Oh, Mr. Tumian.
We, I don't remember doing this this year, but every year, we seem to have the argument about if we should exempt leafbag stickers for the first month of, of the season or the last month, and equated to about ten thousand dollars in revenue. Can we have that argument again every year?
God, I just, it's a terrible argument.
So, no, you don't, we don't wanna talk about it? Okay.
Have October twenty-six, talk about it.
All right, I just wanna throw it out there.
The leaves are falling.
Okay, please continue.
That's all I had, if there's any questions.
Oh, this is property tax.
Yep, so the very last one, and I'm actually gonna have you go two down. It kind of looks in, in total, you guys kind of, you might have a, like a split, a split sheet here, but this is showing the monthly as well as the annual. The first thing I wanna say about this page, it does not include any property tax impact. We haven't even gotten our EAVs from the assessor yet, we won't get it till the end of the month, so we'll come back with that. So we are solely looking at, we've got franchise fees built in, tentatively, that was in our special CIP fund. And so what we wanna do is to look in that blue group there for the monthly impact. So as we look at the recap for WPC for sewer, we talked about a nine percent increase, four percent, and four. So for twenty-five, the increase is an additional three dollars and sixty-five cents per month in twenty-five. And then it goes down to a dollar seventy-eight, and then up slightly to a dollar eighty-five in twenty-seven, as proposed. And water, and again, this is following the plan, we have not changed anything from what you saw last year. The water at seven percent and two and two, you can see those numbers as well, a little higher number there in twenty-five, two dollars and twenty-seven cents. Then going to sixty-eight cents and up to seventy-two cents in twenty-seven. And for stormwater, thirteen cents across the board with rounding, it's amazing, it stayed the same, but it did, thirteen cents a month. And then sanitation, seventy-six cents at the seven percent for twenty-five, and then twenty-three cents in twenty-six, and twenty-four and twenty-seven. So the monthly impact for twenty-five coming up will be six dollars and eighty-one cents, going down to under three dollars projected in twenty-seven. So it's good. We came out of the chute, we fixed what needed to be fixed, and now we're gonna be leveling out over the next couple of years. On an annual basis, all we do is take that six dollars and eighty-one cents and twenty-five times twelve. So it's eighty-one dollars and seventy-two cents on an annual basis. And then you can see there in twenty-six and twenty-seven as well, the annual is going down. And then if we look at the blue highlight, there's an average annual increase in utilities over the three-year period, just for utilities. It's averaging about four dollars and nineteen cents. So it's pretty reasonable for, like, South Slope, all the infrastructure projects, and fixing everything that we're needing to get fixed. And again, you've heard this, but I'm gonna say it again, the proposed fee structure, it is following the plan that we established back in two thousand and twenty-two. And adding all these small incremental increases going forward helps us keep pace with all of our labor costs, our union contracts, inflationary costs from operating, and it funds all of our capital requests right now, as we have them planned over the next three years. So what we are looking for is a nod from council to implement the twenty-five fees, twenty-two, twenty-five fees. And we will come back to you then with an ordinance on October the eighth for your consideration for approval. And then that will allow us time to get all of our software updated, to get fees implemented by January one, as well as notifying our, our other outside. Yeah, cool, yeah, as well, give them their ninety days, so.
So thoughts from council? Stick to the plan? Stick to the plan. Yeah, question?
Yeah. Uh, well, I, I just do wanna say, I'm glad we're coming to the end of the crazy high rate increases we've had to do these last few years. That's just, there's something we inherited, that is something that's been kicked down the road. Some of these, at least one hadn't been updated since I was in high school. And I just, you know, it really sucks to have to look around and see those numbers, but I'm really glad to see we're coming to the other end of it, where we can, can do that. Because these are enterprise funds, they, they're supposed to be self-sustaining, and I'm so glad we've gotten on the path that they are. So thank you for all the, the work in doing that, as well as to all the staff who've helped us spread that out over a few years, instead of, you know, the fifty percent increases we were talking about four years ago.
And with that said, right, where you have to raise something in one category, I wanna just continue to encourage us to look at leveling off or tightening our belts in other areas, because that's how we minimize the impact to our residents, and hopefully still provide high-level service. So, again, I don't want to sound like a curmudgeon, but that's how I see it looking forward, when you get those numbers for the EAV, et cetera.
Yes, and all of our department heads this year worked very, very hard, standing down. I mean, you're gonna see a flat budget, other than contractual increases, some absolute needed, necessary capital requests. But otherwise, it's, it's, it's gonna be a, a good, flat budget. It's probably in that two percent range is what it's gonna come back at, and it's largely all of our union contracts. So, very, very quickly, and I do mean quick.
Okay, so, yeah, we got the, we got the thumbs up, okay.
I just wanna go through the financials to give you a feel-good, because we probably won't go through this in a lot of detail come October. So I just wanna give you a, a snapshot. a snapshot here of the financials. And so Lori, I think I'm actually going to just take, well, actually go back, it's fine. This very first one, it's our fund equity statements. You can see our operating income, it's in the middle, right there. Increasing the fees in the water fund, our net operating went from fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand of net operating, to over a million dollars here in twenty-seven. And that is allowing us, with ARPA going away, because we've been pushing a lot of money from ARPA into the water funds, and with our aggressive CIP plan, we now, through fees, will have money to continue the portion that goes into our water infrastructure.
That is direly needed, especially given what happened this week.
That is beautiful. I thank you, and I thank the council for sticking to the plan, because can you imagine doing that to our community where we weren't being responsible, and then all of a sudden we had no money to pay for anything that we had to pay for? But so that, I thank you so much for this transition from ARPA to our own funds.
Yes. It's been a lot of hard work, and this one here is a pro. Yep, coming up with some financial planning. So if we look into our cash flow, I'm just going to take you kind of the bottom line. Look at the bright yellow, that's two-thirds of the way through the page. You will see, first of all, in twenty-twenty-three, we were at two-point-seven million dollars. It's going to grow to about four-and-a-half million dollars in twenty-seven, but that's when all of our ARPA runs dry. So although we have four-and-a-half million dollars, we're going to be using that for the CIP, as well as paying for all of those lead service loans that are coming up. So it's all built in, covers the debt service, pays for our capital, pays for all of our union contracts, as best as we can project. And then you'll see, I'm not going to go through it, but you can see there where we've got all the loan payments highlighted, that SLRF, the loan payment coming in, and, yeah, all the loan proceeds. So everything's in there, and it's all working. So we are right on target. So I'm going to kind of skip the next couple pages, it's just charts. You've already seen all of the capital on page seventy-three, you've seen the rate increases, so let's jump to sewer on page seventy-five. Again, you will see our net operating income in twenty-three, the middle of the page, was at one-point-four million in twenty-three. We project that up to three million dollars. And so we're right on target to be, you know, paying for everything that needs to come forward out of that fund. If we turn to the cash flow, look at the bottom line.
Nice.
You'll see that cash and investments are going, jumping from ten million in twenty-three up to thirteen million dollars. The key thing I want to point out is in twenty-twenty-eight, so it's the year not on this page, that is our first year of debt service payments, which will be right around four-point-three million dollars annually on all those loans for South Slope. So, but it's all built in, it's paying for itself. We don't anticipate any changes unless bids come in totally crazy. You know, we're going to have to regroup a little bit. But right now, we're on target, that everything is working, everything's working. So then I'm just going to skip and do the same, exact same thing here for the stormwater, just to, it's on page eighty-one. Well, I should talk here about that income, the net operating income jumped from only a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in twenty-three up to seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand. And that is all your new project money, cash flowing capital projects. So, again, those fee increases are working. If you look at the cash flow, it's not a lot of money, but the fund has money. Our net reserves in that bright yellow line in twenty-seven, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars. But it is paying now for an average annual capital in excess of one million dollars. So finally, we've got project money, it's also being able to pay for vehicles and things like that, as well as all of our operating. And then lastly, if we jump into sanitation, our net operating jumped from two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand in twenty-three up to just shy a seven-hundred-thousand in twenty-seven, which seems like a huge jump, but when you take a look at the cash flow on the next page, the biggest thing is, is that we have huge amounts of replacement vehicles for all of our packers that are coming up. And in twenty-twenty-five, we have, I'm going to turn my page so I can make sure I'm saying it right. In twenty-twenty-five, we've got one-and-a-half million dollars going out for three replacement packers and one replacement rear-load packer. Then in twenty-six, we've got an additional two replacement packers coming up. And then in twenty-seven, another rear loader, it's addition to the fleet. And so although we have a fund balance of nine-hundred, nine-hundred-and-five-thousand, it was one-point-five-million, nine-hundred-thousand in excess, we need those funds, because those vehicles rotate out every five or six years. And we're already in twenty-seven, at year three on those first three we're replacing in twenty-five.
So like a good takeaway for the average Molina who might hear this or look at the documents and be like, wait, you have all this, you know, above the reserve policy, et cetera, et cetera. Actually, all that money is spoken for?
Yes, yes. And the goal is to simply break even, that our fees pay for all the increases in our operating, and it pays for a hundred percent of the future vehicle costs and parts. And so, yeah, when you see it on the rotating basis, it's working. And I'm also going to add to what the mayor said, that I am truly so proud of this council for making those hard decisions a couple of years ago. It is very difficult to say you're going to raise fees. But as we're seeing here, it was the right thing to do, it needed to be done, and it's truly a sustainable solution for these funds. It's got us on the right track. So I appreciate the support you gave us, because when all of staff made our original presentations, you know, I'm, everyone was overwhelmed, we were overwhelmed, but it was the right thing to do. So I appreciate that, and it's working. Thank you.
Just a general comment, and I think it's important, if you're paying attention to conversations going on in the local government world, and across the country, you know, and here in Illinois, here in Cook County, here in some of the big cities, you know, they're wondering which programs that they were funding with ARPA, that they're going to be able to continue funding, or not fund at all. And I think what we've done here, I mean, is we've maximized the utilization of the ARPA dollars, and we've used them in ways others have not, you know, much to our benefit as a community. But by the same token, we were building up all of these fees and services that needed to be done, so that when those ARPA dollars do trickle away, because there's no spending in twenty-six, we're done, twenty-five is, it's over, twenty-six, we actually, we're going to be reporting and gathering information, and making sure that we get what we need to report to the orders, because we're not paying any of that money back. But by the same token, we've been building these reserves, they're healthy, and then we've been taking care of our fees. So we've been fiscally responsible as a council and as an administration. And we won't be facing those same questions that other communities are going to find themselves challenged with, because people have gotten accustomed to seeing all this new sidewalks and new roads and new water sewer replacements. All of a sudden, if you stop doing that, you think you'd get calls? You bet. So, you know, kudos to everyone at the dais and everyone in the administration across the entire spectrum. It's just, we're in a good spot, we're in a good spot. You need to hear that.
All right, let's finish up. Last two items, and I don't think they're not terribly lengthy, is the ARPA fund. As we have talked, I mean, oh, Bob, I might, we're actually going to start, this is a really nice snapshot of the ARPA spending report through September of twenty-four, that your city administrator in Macy put together.
At the mayor's request.
At the mayor's request? No, it was just a.
So many requests.
It's a team effort in administration.
It's a very, it's a very nice summary. It's the same, it's the same thing that is on the big Excel spreadsheet, but this is really nice and neat and organized, and really identifies the projects in total.
And Barry worked on this, too.
Thank you. I appreciate this.
I didn't realize, I mean, he's been missed several times tonight.
Mayor's conferences asked, told us, suggested to us, tell your community what you did with your ARPA dollars. And I went to a community meeting, and they said, where did all the ARPA dollars go?
Yeah.
It's all online, but, yeah.
No, but this is one, it's, it is, it's really wonderful, it breaks it out. We've got restrictive projects to date of eight-million-four-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, and the restrict, I'm sorry, that's unrestricted, and the restrictive is about seven million dollars. And that is by the end of this year, we anticipate about fifteen million dollars being spent, with a balance of just in excess of five million dollars over the next couple of years. And we've got a good, solid plan. I know Bob's talked to all the directors, it is the highest priority to be pounding through these funds.
Yep.
Just so the council knows, this split between unrestricted and restrictive, we have two more cha, not two more chances, we have two compliance issues that we have to recalculate what those proportionate splits are, and they're based on our audit. So December of twenty-four, our audit, and December of twenty-five, these dollars could slightly reposition, and it might be that we have to switch some projects up. And that's just a part of the compliance. But we are mandated right now. Oh.
Uh, what?
Yep, thank you. Yep.
But we, I was going to say, from a compliance standpoint, we are required, with our December, with our December filing of ARPA coming up, requires us to allocate one-hundred percent of our funds. That doesn't mean we can't shuffle it if we have to, but we want to get things locked in, so our directors can all, you know, really focus on getting that money.
Buckle down and get it spent.
Yes. So we have to allocate it by the December of twenty-four and spent by December of twenty-six. So just, I just want to highlight this last plan, we talked about it during the roundtable. We made a couple of changes, and I just wanted to show you the updates. We added the Riverside Pool from the roundtable discussion, the two-hundred-thousand dollars. And the purchase of the, it's the Bethany Homes property for the one-stop shop, that includes remodeling. Again, that was discussed at the roundtable, one-million-nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand. We added Thirtieth Avenue, Fourteenth to Sixteenth is in there. And a new one here that Bob and I discussed, in an effort to try to spin through our ARPA dollars as quickly as possible, and as we head into the special CIP plan, we are looking to council, we are recommending for your consideration, to spend two-and-a-half million dollars out of the special improvement fund to potentially demo Bridge Point. Go out for bid for that. So these dollars could be crossed over and considered for that, so we can start jump-starting the whole development down there at I-74. And the next one there, water, we had money, I'm going to jump down to land bank. You'll see the highlighted forty-two thousand, forty-two thousand. Originally, that was a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. Our contract is running out in twenty-five, so we've allocated the forty-two, forty-two, and took the difference, seventy-six thousand, and placed it up with water, just so we know that we can get that money spent in a hurry on the restricted side. And then the same thing was for our childcare, all of those, the requests for support have been fulfilled, and there was a balance of fifty-thousand dollars that were also moving into water, out of that childcare line. And then that, the total, as you see it right here, equals the twenty-million-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars. The timing of when some of these projects are going to occur may change, you know, like the infrastructure may get backed up, but we will be spending that money down by the, before December of twenty-six, so.
Without fail.
Yes. So we're just looking for council to kind of give us a heads up, because this is how we'd like to submit it to ARPA right now, just to show that our allocation has been met, our total allocation.
Seeing head nods from all guests. Question? Yep.
Well, I just would reiterate the point I sort of made earlier, that if there are, if there are occasions where we can move something, right, that we know is happening and it qualifies under ARPA funding, I don't think I'd have a problem of the year of saying, okay, yeah, let's move that into ARPA. And then we can reallocate the general funds or whatever was supposed to go to it. Just, I'm getting worried about the deadline, and I know we're going to be watching that personally, but anytime we can move something up, I'd think, love to hear about it.
No, we're totally with you. And just to kind of give you a heads up, when we purchased like the Bethany Homes, that's almost two million dollars. We've got the flood going in for par, that's almost two million dollars. So we've got some big, big chunks of money that we're going to blow through in a hurry. But no, very valid point, we, and we will keep you updated if we feel like we're running into a problem. So our very last item, and again, this is one that we're going to continue to have discussions on, is our ten-year special capital improvement fund. This is a funding model, and there are many projects that are on this plan, that we don't have enough information right now to make decisions. But the good news is, is we have a really nice bucket of available funds for future projects, council's consideration. So I'm going to kind of quickly go down our twenty-five year, just to kind of give you an update. But the good thing is, is that as projects occur, council can make a decision to move it from the unallocated holding revenue line down into a specific project. So we'll have lots of decisions over many, many years that we're going to continue to make. So as we head into the twenty-five year, I'm just going to give a real quick, brief review. Property taxes, as you know, we actually levied property taxes to go in this fund to help support working towards that three-million-dollar CIP level. We had five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand in twenty-four, and in twenty-five, each year, we have increased it two-hundred-thousand. And the hope was that we could take available growth on our EAV to the tune of two-hundred to help fund this plan. And it's compounding itself, it's a small incremental amount. So as soon as we get that EAV, I will let you guys know what that impact is as we head into October twenty-sixth. But that's the plan, and we should be able to meet that with, with the growth that we have. We'll just have to see what the impact is on our homeowners and commercial. The transferring from cannabis, we talked about that earlier, it's an annual amount of two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-two-hundred. It's a weird amount. When we first put it together, that's the only money we had left. So at some point, we'll probably round that to two-hundred-and-fifteen. But we've got there, that amount in for every year. Our natural gas and electric franchise fees are working wonderfully. We're going to get eleven months this year, and right now, we are on target to meet Mid-Americans' projections of what we were going to receive. So, in twenty, so there's no change for twenty-five. In twenty-six, it'll come before your consideration, if we follow the plan to up at the three percent, to allow us to do everything that we've got planned out here. But that's a discussion for another day. And the amusement tax, as you know, last year, Bob did a great job negotiating with Vibrant, that we've got that half a million dollars in there for coming in from, it used to be the tourism. We're on target to get that money, so it's going to help fund these projects. We've got a targeted solar grant for four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, offset with an expenditure down below, that's just kind of an in-and-out placement holder. And we're still kind of sorting through what can and cannot be spent with those grant dollars, but at least it's earmarked and it's on this page.
It can only be strictly used for engineer, architectural engineering design. It cannot be used for feasibility study, as it was originally submitted. So we've had to step back, revisit, renegotiate, and we've lost a few months because of that. So. And we've lost a few months because of that, so.
And then for 2025, we just talked about council considering to transfer in $700,000 from ARPA to help the Bridge Point demo. And you'll see that in bright yellow down below in the blue. Right now, we anticipate, without going out for bid yet, that it could be as high as about $2.5 million. So if we patch other money that's available in this fund, we would have the $2.5 million with these ARPA funds to begin the demolition on Bridge Point. And that's one thing is we head into October that we'll kind of want a nod from council. Do you want us to go out for bid on that? Just so we know where we're at.
The other variable on the demolition is, is that until we develop that final plan, this 2.5 million is for demolition of the entire complex. So if portions of it remain, there'll be less demolition. And there's also going to be, of course, the
Study on
Removable, removable, all the things that can be removed of value will be, will be removed and then sold. So we'll salvage the building before we actually demo it. We won't crush it with all the good, with all the copper wire in it. We won't crush it with all the good quality doors. Things will be removed and sold. So there's offsetting revenue there.
Okay. We've got money in there from some city property sales, which has been great in the current year as well as for next year. So that's added money to reinvest. And we've got some interest income coming in. So that's basically the revenues. On the expenditure side, you'll see in the kind of purple pink area there, that PCI consultant recommendation. We've got $1 million of CIP projects that we discussed at the roundtable. It's going to inch up to $2 million in '26. And then it's going to hit the $3 million mark if all of our revenues and everything stay the same by 2032. So we're within that range that their original recommendation was. And it may be that we need to actually be jumping higher, but that's, it's a huge amount. It's over $20 million of additional infrastructure that we will be able to provide our citizens over the next
Just to maintain, not to get ahead
Yeah.
Of what our PCI was, so.
Yep. But this is additional 20 million that we did not have without this plan. So, and again, it's because of these new revenue sources that this plan is making this plan work. Then going on down, you will see these unallocated funds available for special capital improvements. That's the key line. That's the bucket of money that is available for whatever council decides to spend money on. Currently, it's $11 million. If you, we pulled down the $2.5 million for the Bridge Point, you could add that back up there and it's 13.5 million. I mean, it's a huge chunk of money to start out with, albeit over time. And then you can see, in the future, we've got some city hall remodeling. We've got the central fire station down here coming onboard for construction in 2027. We're still on target for that with principal and interest payments beginning in '28. And again, that is paid out of this fund. And we are also have set aside funds for the purchase of the land purchase for the new fire station. So that's an additional $1.2 million that potentially could go out yet this year, correct? And then we've also got the money in there for the JCPenney's, $2.8 million in, in 2025. So it's big dollars with a big plan. Again, it hits our target of the $3 million CIP. It allows $11 million in future development projects. The one thing I wanted to point out, it's just kind of for FYI, if by chance we get a large project or the council feels that there's a very high priority project, say down on the riverfront or wherever, you always have the opportunity that you could bond if you would choose to to kind of leverage your revenues to spread it out so you can do something like a wow project right out of the chute to get things going. So I've done some, I had, we ran some bond schedules at $1 million and then $5 million just to give you a feel for how that would impact it. And it, and it does spread out cash flow. So, but we would have to put a lot of thought into that prior to making that decision. But I also had our financial advisors refresh our fire, the fire department, just to see where the interest rates were. Because now that they've come down a teeny bit, we're still looking at bonding for $26 million. And our interest rate right now, the true interest cost is 4.08, so.
It's not bad, but it needs to be better.
Lower than it was.
Yeah, oh, yes. It is lower than what it was. And so our average, we budgeted in our plan for about $2 million. It's down to about 1,930,000. But I mean, it's, that saves a lot of interest over a 20-year period, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any, I know, any final questions? Given that we're just about to get out of the council meeting and go to regular meeting, I think
This is a regular meeting?
Please follow up. No, no. To pass the childcare program, we were online until 11:30 or midnight. So anyway.
You remember that?
Oh, yes, I do remember. All right, thank you very much, Director Barnes. We'll call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands united under God, civil and democratic, fair and just.
Excuse me?
I know.
Don't mean to yawn. Do you have an invocation?
No, I don't yawn.
All right, we'll move on to our roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias. Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of committee of the whole council and executive session meeting minutes of September 10, 2024. Appointments made during committee of the whole on September 24, 2024 and consent agenda items.
Yep.
15.1 through 15.6 inclusively.
And we are, and a side note, we're moving to 15.6 and not 15.7 because actually, because that's moving to non-consent, that was not a unanimous vote. Timian voted nay.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, you caught that?
I did not get that.
That was Timian and Macias. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Item number 17.1 and ordinance amending chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, appendix 10 thereof. Parking prohibited at any time by adding 6th Avenue on the south side beginning at a point 110 feet east of 53rd Street, continuing east for 60 feet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 17.2 and ordinance amending chapter 11 Fire Prevention and Protection of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 11-2100. Establish composition and section 11-2101. Order of ranking by adding amendments to reflect the new process of appointing a deputy chief effective September 24, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions, item number 17.5, right?
It's a, it's a resolution, not an ordinance?
Well, but
Oh, it's a first reading, sorry.
15.7.
I'm good, right?
This is, this is not where 15.7 goes. It goes under first, non-consent, first reading ordinances. You're good.
Okay. Item number 18.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Blick &amp; Blick Oil Inc. for the purchase and delivery of fuel for the amount of the low rack posting price per gallon plus any applicable taxes and the delivery rate more particularly described herein.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.2, a resolution approving a special event that is sponsored by St. Mary's Catholic Church for the Parish Carnival scheduled for Sunday, September 29, 2024, closing certain streets more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said events.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 18.3, a resolution granting of variance to chapter 28 Streets and Sidewalks of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 28-3200A and chapter 35 Zoning and Land Development of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 35-4218, to allow a temporary modification to delay the construction of sidewalk along the subject property located at 2623 45th Street, Mullen.
Motion to Pause one second. I think she read 18-point something instead of
Eighteen-point-three, she said.
I read the right one, didn't I?
No, it's
Which is 15.7.
15.7.
That's the one, Timian.
Uh huh. Okay.
Right, but when she just read the number off, she said 18-point.
Because I'm making it 18.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Did I not do that? Okay. Because it's not 18.3 on the agenda, but it's going to that section?
Right, but no, we, we can't make up a number on the spot, I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah, 15.7.
Okay, so item number 15.7.
Yeah.
Let me read it again. A resolution granting of variance to chapter 28 Streets and Sidewalks of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 28-3200A and chapter 35 Zoning and Land Development of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 35-4218, to allow a temporary modification to delay the construction of sidewalk along the subject property located at 2623 45th Street, Mullen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number 19.1 and ordinance amending chapter 5 Amusements of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 5-1101C, by increasing the number of video game terminal licensed establishments in the city at the request of Nick Boes, potential purchaser of Rosie's Watering Hole, 1731 7th Street, Mullen.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderperson Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries. Item number 19.2 and ordinance amending chapter 4 Alcoholics Liquor of the Mullen Code of Ordinances, section 4-3104. Number of licenses by increasing the number of Class B tavern licenses in the city at the request of Dieter and Nancy Rebitzer, Rebitzer's Bar and Grill, Illinois LLC. Current owners are Broken Saddle, 1417 5th Avenue, Mullen.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.[1659.33]